That's yeah.
Joel Taylor.
Good.
I don't know, let that just get out of the accent.
Pine Island and the Colton, after, after four P M. Pine Island.
Yeah.
You can do Twilight Specials twenty months in our car.
I remember they called the side out.
Eighteen eighteen. If you don't continue to.
You don't know.
Hi Dana.
Hi.
For young.
Good as I should.
Hi Joel.
Hey.
Great.
How are you?
Fantastic.
I can break the punch. That's how, that's how.
I bet you're off this week.
Last week.
Last week.
Well, I, I. I got three or four.
Hopefully you had a good time off, huh?
Fourteen.
Did you do something fun?
Sturgis. Sturgis.
Oh, good for you.
Was that, uh, um, back to normal?
Yeah.
A lot of people?
I don't know, I bet. It's like everybody else.
Is that an annual occurrence, or is that a?
Yeah, let me see.
I can break that on very near.
Counting all my shots.
Absolutely.
Never been.
Everybody else. This has been. All day. Or something.
Twenty-five years old, I said, if you can stand here on the corner.
Alright. You're ready to go.
Make change. No, I'm, but yeah, I don't, I don't. I don't. I have ideas on that. They call the same one, they gotta write.
Yes.
That's exactly what they did.
Yes. Thanks. Yeah, so I looked more at that, I thought more about it, I don't think that it really matters. You know. I don't know if you record those. I mean, did you get away to record them? I don't think it matters. It's gonna be ultimately a seller house, though. I still think they're airbrushed. But.
What do you say, busy?
How are you?
I have a question.
I'm ready.
Any problems there?
Is this?
Yeah. You have a theory you need.
I don't know that many.
Yeah, what they do same thing.
And I just, if we can. We can ask.
Did you say, oh, my name, my last name?
Is it all one last, is it the last two, or your last name?
Yes, my last name is.
Yeah.
Were you able to take any time and look at that agreement?
Yeah, my spouse, uh, is from Mauritius. Little island off the coast.
I saw the email.
Oh, okay.
So, so. You want me to look at it?
You don't. It was just so unique, I had to ask.
I think I sent it last Wednesday night, and I, when I get back to the H O A, I kind of. Okay, it's been early this week, so if you feel a lot of. I hope it's a simple agreement. So, there's a few points within, it's, it's basically the sister to the river bend agreement. Different than the riverbank stabilization.
So, it's same, same thing, different development.
Kind of. I, I think I'll use it happen. Because it wasn't there, it's not together. There's an existing key, so some of the, some of the requirements.
Well, that's.
A similar.
You can have one of mine.
I think.
Uh, Jane.
So, I was trying to say, I think last Wednesday, I.
Well, we've seen how long it was like that. The hands were on the. Yeah, I don't know, somewhere.
Six thirty, so.
I know, now they're calling.
Six thirty, so we'll go ahead and start, Tuesday, August seventeenth. Call to order. Roll phone.
Jim Richards.
Rhino Nykhorst.
Sorry, not that, Dana Bergman.
Super, okay, um, the agenda we have tonight, um, going on, I would like to make one. I'd like to pull ahead the, uh, under unfinished orders, the pet ordinance review and discussion. Something that was, uh, tabled over from our July meeting, and I would like to bring that forward to. After F and before G. Downtown Orinoco Gold Rush State Supreme Ordinance is.
I move to approve agenda with changes.
Right, your comments, discussion. Favor, second, if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both say no. It's approved. Alright, uh, we're here with our public forum. The three-minute time limit per person, our city council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to data privacy rules. No employees' names may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We also request that your comments be limited to three minutes, speakers will be recognized only once. At this time, we ask that anyone who would like to address the city council, please step up to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have the ordinance provided.
Dan Tronson, property twenty-five minutes, what happened, the rise in the council, I'd like to speak. On the wall, I appreciate the wall that's done. Uh, it's my understanding that the wall was going to be terraced up. It is not, it was left off with a six foot on our end of, down by the property, straight up and down, that was not what I was told here at the council, or the council discussed. We now have, uh, three boards. With stakes driven in the ground on that hillside to keep the wa- uh, wall from washing around the end. That's not what I was told here at this council, or this council discussed. The color of the wall is pink, it's got a pink cast to it, that's not what we talked about. It's in front of my property, we talked about Saint Mary's, the color of Saint Mary's is stone, I don't know who picked the color, I was told, that one individual on the council picked the color. It's my understanding, the statute still stands in Orinoco, that nobody had the choice of anything unless they are here at the Orinoco City Council meeting. Evidently, that will be the third time that I've rose for this council, that business of this council's been done by one member of the council and not the entire board, which therefore. I would tell you that we do not have representation, I, as a property owner in this town, do not have representation of this board. One member is not the board, the statute is in there that says that the only power you have is when you meet here at this council meeting. So, decisions are being made, my road was shut off, I paid money out of my own pocket, have a plow, that never come before the council. The painting of the wall never come before the council, I was shown, and I don't mention names, the individual of this council showed me preliminary drawings, I was told by that person. He was gonna tear us up, herb was told the same thing, it was gonna go into the hillside and tear us up, not just stop and do what it does. Now, as I watched the workers put the fence up, they bent the pipe, it's kinked, if they go up there and check out the work, it's kinked, they bent the pipe. In the back end of their bumper of their truck. So, instead of taking a pipe bender and making a nice smooth curvature, they put it in there, now it's got kinks, well, that kink, when it comes to, uh, powder coating and stuff. That's gonna crack, that's gonna rust and do things, oh, I guess that's the workmanship of how it was finished and done. For a hundred and twenty-four thousand, I stood and rose before this council last time, when people come before this council, said people weren't signing things on their sewer. I can tell you why they're not gonna sign things on this sewer, because if a hundred and twenty-four dollar, a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar project ends up like this. My water main now sticks out of the ground, it was not sticking out of the ground, needs to go back flush with the ground, as I had it. And the wall finish, if you finish projects like this on that small of a project, I can see why the people of Orinoco. Are gonna have issues with you. My other thing I write for the council, and I don't know where you're aware, and I'm gonna make the, where your attorney aware of this tonight. That the city, uh, Orinoco Gold Rush Committee consists of all five members of the council. When you go to that meeting, you're holding a legal meeting, because now you're all in a quorum. And under Minnesota state law, it says that you have to have a set agenda. Because you were all in a quorum, and you were meeting in a quorum, that is now becoming a city council meeting. At your Gold Rush meeting, you gotta look up the statute, Minnesota law. That's what's happening. So, when you, you're a five oh one C three, and I don't know that a five oh one C three can be the city of Orinoco, because mayor, you sit on. The, as the chair of the Orinoco Gold Rush Committee, and you sit as the mayor here, so when you disperse money. From Orinoco Gold Rush Committee to Orinoco City Council, please tell me where there's a difference. There is a difference, because the council holds five of the nine seats on the Orinoco Gold Rush meeting. Orinoco Gold Rush Committee is a fantastic thing for the town, and what goes on in this town, I don't know if you're aware of this, but that is a special meeting now. And you, and, 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 and you can shake your head, the attorney can shake his head, no, but I can read the statutes, anytime three or more of the members meet. It's considered a quorum by state law, thank you. And I would like, and I would like to have the wall, one more, I would like to have the wall changed to the color that it should be.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? My name is Chris Powell, I live at eleven thirty-five Riverwood Drive, uh, southwest, uh, and I'd like the council to kind of reconsider the. Uh, action of putting speed tables on Riverwood, Riverwood Drive. I know that there are three separate issues, there's been an issue with West Center traffic, there's been an issue with Zumbro Hills and traffic, and I very much agree with those two issues. However, I've lived on Riverwood Hills or Riverwood Drive for over eighteen years, and I've never seen an actual issue of speeding. The issue is that the speed limit is thirty miles an hour, so as you are walking down the street, or walking your dog, or taking your leisurely walk for the evening. And a car drives by at thirty miles an hour, it seems fast. We have no facts, we have no data that says that people are actually speeding on Riverwood Drive. I've done my own data, I've used a baseball radar gun, I've seen twenty-three people drive by, and one individual was speeding. They were doing four miles an hour over, they were doing thirty-four. There are zero speed limit signs on the entire area, there is a slow sign with a flag. So, at this point, I don't see the reason to jump to a conclusion, to put in a speed table for Riverwood Drive. The crux of the issue, the main issue, is there, there is only one way in and one way out of all of this. Section four of Riverwood one and Riverwood four hills subdivision. If there was connected down to one hundred, like I know that's a future discussion. All of the individuals at Ista Lane, Chinoa Lane, the Ru- New Riverwood Court Development that was just recently done, would literally drive down the hill. All of the individuals on Zumbro Hills would not have that traffic coming in. In addition, you have construction workers and a bunch of people driving in, and so you're going to put a permanent fixture on my road. Because of a knee-jerk reaction to one or two comments on Riverwood Drive. The other co- the other areas, I totally agree, if you wanna put something there, it makes sense, I just ask you that you reconsider that. Find some more data and figure out if it makes sense for Riverwood Drive until you know more. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in public forum?
Lance Swartson, I'm representing the, uh, session of Presbyterian Church Orinoco at twenty-third Street Southwest. We're asking for equal treatment, since you chose to try to solve a problem that really didn't exist with the wall. We have had that same issue for seventy-five years, we spent thousands of dollars on improving that corner. And, uh, now we are just asking for equal treatment, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in public forum? Third final call for public forum. And then we'll close at six forty. Alright, uh. Sergeant Chambers. Like to make some comments, or anything the council should be aware of, and we may call, call you back to talk about our speed table later on, too, so.
Yeah, that's what I have, this discussion, be here for questions and comments, anything I can help out with, uh, speeding. Complaints in town, so, um, I have nothing to pass on, other than we got, uh, Gold Rush coming up, so we're all excited for that. Be good that, so, I'll be in the back.
Can check him up pretty fast, because we have some things to take care of first. Thank you. Dan, Department.
Great, good evening. So, the runs we had, I mentioned at the last meeting, because it was fresh on the mind, so I talked about it then, so they, they occurred after I submitted my thing, so. Not much more to say, again, we got a good review meeting at our fire meeting this month, talking about what we did, and. We feel that went pretty well, and always for areas of opportunity, not kind of, we don't get big structure fires like that, so a couple of things we probably could have done better, but. You know, we were, I'm pretty happy with, you know, the turnout, the mutual aid support we had, and what we did on that call. Uh, the next one was the Department of Pressure Washer. So, if you remember back then, I had to go back and look it up, so back last year in February, we asked for sixteen hundred dollars to come out of the equipment fund to buy a pressure washer, because ours was. Kinking out, we had a handy guy who got ours working, so we thought, great, you know, save the city some money, we don't need to buy it. Well, that worked well until it doesn't work, and so now we have a pressure washer that doesn't work, so now we're back to, you know, needing the pressure washer again. So, sounds like King gave you a kind of a bit of a commercial one, that looks on, looks pretty, looks like it would meet our needs, you know, last time we were thinking like a four thousand PSI, that's a thirty-one or thirty-two hundred, but it could be fine. So, with that, maybe try and get some, maybe some longer hoses, we've noticed that the hoses that we, the one we have is pretty small, and people have to cart around. So, I guess I, you know, I'm not sure how you wanna do it, since we had been approved for sixteen hundred last time and never used it. If we just wanna amend it, maybe do a thousand dollars, because we're thinking seven hundred plus some equipment, sales tax, we could probably keep the next purchase for, you know, a thousand, so just wanna. Not sure how, if you just wanna amend the first one, or just have a new motion, just kind of up to a thousand. Out of our equipment fund.
The budget for equipment fund?
Out of the, our, no, not budget, our equipment fund, you, that's funded by gambling.
Yeah, okay.
Which was what we had asked for last.
Well, the sixteen hundred before was from where, except from the equipment fund, too?
It was going to be, yes, so we never spent it, because we got that pressure washer working, but now it's beyond repair.
Can we just still use that? Do we need to vote on this?
Well, that's why I'm just bringing it up, because it is actually, we're, we're gonna get a different one, so we're asking only, maybe amend it to a thousand dollars, based on the new one that we'd like to get. Same request.
We, yeah, the funds are ready.
Yep.
We had used.
I just wanna know, I just wanna make sure if you wanted to have a separate request, because this is a different amount than what I had last time, if you're fine with, okay, spent up to sixteen hundred, I'm only gonna spend a thousand, I'm fine with that.
That was the motion up to sixteen hundred, I think.
Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure, since, plus it says it was over a year, I didn't wanna all of a sudden surprise you with a bill, then some of you guys were already running on the council.
No, I, I, I have, I wanna say something once you're done, I think, just for transparency.
Are, are you done?
Nope.
Okay, go ahead. For this item.
Okay, you're good to go, good to go.
Okay, and then, uh, the excavator, that shouldn't have been on this thing, that was just supposed to be a bill that gets paid, so that was not for discussion. And then I think what Jim was going to, you know, bring up is, uh, we, we gotta, we, you did the equipment fund kind of reconciliation, got to the point where we feel that the amount you think we should have is the amount that we think we should have. And we had somebody say, they never saw that on a city council, that we actually got it to a finalization, so I, I, I just wanna bring it up here, that. Public record that, yes, we're, you found the money, it's in our C I P fund, you have a line item, we're gonna be a little, probably a little more diligent in looking at it, making sure that donations. Which are tracked, are different than the, uh, gambling funds which come in, which are also donations, and so when we make a request like this payment for this pressure washer that we're gonna buy. You know, we'll make sure that it goes to not our equipment fund in the budget, but our equipment fund in the C I P.
It's really the fund in the capital budget.
Yes. Yeah, so we just wanna make sure that citizens know that we came to a resolution and an agreement of, the money's been found, it's just earmarked, is that what you wanted to bring up, Jim?
Yeah, I was gonna bring that up, and maybe you already mentioned it, about maybe in the future, where those funds should be. Kane and some firemen brought it up, that they thought it should maybe be in a separate fund at the bank, so they don't have to sort it out, and everything else, just in that fund of its own, or in that account of its own.
Yeah, well, whatever seems to be maybe the, the best way to, I guess maybe we have more focus on it now, so now we know where to look.
We have focus, we know where it's at, we're very clear where. But you have to stipulate, that's the main thing.
Yes, yeah, it's equipment fund, I have a budget item in my budget for equipment, and this is a different one, okay? So, I think that's all I had for fire, uh, first response, we actually had a busy month.
Uh, one question.
Sure.
The cat excavator, one hour.
Yep. Yeah, so that was for, that was, it was for the fire call, but I had sent the bill with my email, and it, it got on the agenda, it's not supposed to be on the agenda, it's like Twitter box, so. So, it's just, you'll prove it as every other bill, I, I wasn't trying to draw your attention to the bill.
Got it, thank you.
Uh, first responders, so you can see they're eleven city, nine in the township. And then, again, check that, nothing going on, which is good, not having bad weather, hopefully we have great weather this week, so. We should have a good week. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, under personnel, we have, uh, a request from city staff to review the language and the rates. Uh, for the community center and the, uh, packet, the, uh. The original park rattle, no, sorry. The community center. Everybody had a chance to look at it, the packet of the original. It was a hundred and fifty for a full day, seventy-five for half day, and twenty-five for less than two hours. What's our. Selecting on is invited to green, the city wants to, just referencing the senior room. For a hundred dollars for two hours or more, twenty-five for two hours or less, exceptions. Security deposit of a hundred and fifty before it was, uh, different levels of fifty for two hours, five hundred. Non-residents, three hundred residents. And then the rentals are not guaranteed under application, so, until a payment is submitted.
When you say senior room, would you partition that off now, because of all the equipment, is that why you wanna? Or what, what's the, what do you mean by senior?
Senior room.
With the curtains. Because.
There is.
So, oh, there's nobody here, but when they have a full hour, it's not enough, that wouldn't be enough.
So, the fiber guilds, they typically come into this area, too, they just have forty-plus members, they need their space to spread out.
Or they just don't know where that, or?
Saying it's just.
I just wanna clarify, because I don't wanna like let some sort of in here, not in here, but we have.
Uh, that's the proposal, is the senior room and not rent the council room, but I think we do need the council room.
Well, we definitely do, to fit people.
I don't think we should split the room rates up, I think just one rate for the two rooms.
Maybe ma- name it a different thing. As long as we let everybody in the same. I, it's one of the sure. Depending on how they ask, we can always ask Kim and Jim.
If you know they're gonna use this room, we have public works, have them pull the tables back, rather than individuals, because that's how the other ones got damaged so much, it's just, everybody started pulling around. Because there are locks on them. These are a little bit more sturdy than the older ones, too, so. So, I think what happened before is because we have rooms slash floors. But we just said the main floor.
This is our room.
Three floor down and. Let's, let's change that to main floor. Dash down. Main floor. What are your thoughts about the hourly rates, going from what we have before? Three rates down to two.
It's easier probably to. Track those, so I'd say that's fine. We also don't have the staff to, if people only rent it for a couple hours to flip it for the next room, so we only usually do one rental a day.
And then if it's on the weekend, like, nobody's gonna come in and clean, that's kind of what we ran into this past weekend.
Oh, so you.
Can you speak up to everybody that you're sorry?
Okay, um, just trying to get away with less, you know, like, if they, on the weekend, like, if we rent one up, it's been out Saturday and Sunday, there's nobody to come in and clean it on the weekend. You know what I'm saying?
Oh, okay.
We also don't have, like, somebody rents it for a couple hours, and then somebody wants to rent it again right afterwards, there's no time to come in here and make sure it's clean, so we usually only do one rental a day, so, kind of cuts down. Kind of averages out the price then, since we aren't doing four to one.
Is everybody okay with a different rate? Do you agree? So, I make a motion that we accept the changes to the community center rental agreement. To say the main floor. For both the rental rate, a hundred dollars for two hours or more, and twenty-five for two hours or less. Security deposit of a hundred and fifty for rentals over two hours. And rentals are not guaranteed until fee is, free deposit is submitted.
Second.
Other comments? All's in favor, signify if I was saying aye. Park room agreement. As a, uh. Stipulation that all rentals are, are not guaranteed until application fee is submitted, so I think that's. To make a motion that we accept the change to the, uh, acceptance of agreements, not guaranteed until application fee is submitted to city hall. Dana?
Yes.
Any other discussion? See not all of those in favor, signify if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both, the whole. FYI, city rentals for city staff, it's currently free, we're in committee meetings. Next item is American Rescue Plan, this is something that you've probably heard on the news, we really haven't talked about it in detail, but, uh. There's a Q and A, L M C, thinking minnesota cities dot org has a lot of information, that's where this Q and A frequently asked questions come from. Uh, we will be submitting our submission for it here in the next week or so. State has received two point eight three billion dollars, and, uh, we'll adopt a resolution here in a few minutes for our portion. It's a hundred and fifty. Two thousand five hundred dollars, I think. Hundred and fifty. It's an estimate, we won't know the exact submission, but they're, basing on a hundred and five dollars per capita, times our. Population in twenty nineteen was fifteen hundred and ten units. So, let you. Basically, a little over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When we do our submission, we get fifty percent of it this year, seventy-five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And then the balance will be one year from now. And there's, uh. It's a little bit different than the, uh, careers money received a year ago, the funds or eligible uses are a little bit different. Uh, there's a lot of the funds that don't really apply to our city, but the ones that are, for example, the water infrastructure. We have investments in water and sewer and broadband, or sewer, we have, that's not, we don't have that now yet, broadband is. Pretty much, for the city itself, is pretty much in good shape, uh, FCOM and everything, so water, the drinking water state revolving fund, which we do have, our water, uh, system. We are looking, and we talked about this in July meeting, about some inflow, uh, level sensors and inflow sensors, and so that would be covered under this CARES Act. That's about a twenty thousand dollars. Uh, every so many years, we also pull the pumps lines and do refurbishment, and those are about twenty to twenty-five thousand, something like that. We should be able to use that for one of the cycles for pumps. Funds have to be used by December twenty twenty-four, so we've got plenty of time. To use it, but at the same time, we also have time to, uh, let the council become more familiar with this. There's more information coming out from L M C of how people are using the funds, and a lot of are related to, um. Businesses, and you look at question number five on page three, it talks about the eligible uses, so. Read through those and uh. We'll have continued discussions about uses, how we use the funds. We can also use it uh. For Jim's salary, he saw now because of COVID. So, fifty, maybe back next Monday. So there'd be fifty, forty, fifty-three hours that we can get reimbursed for his time off due to COVID, so. Like that submission as well. Or hopefully no others going forward, but you do, it happens, we have funds to cover that. Any other questions from what you've heard about Rescue Planner? Work on this and.
I did have one question.
Sure.
How are we, when we do? How the money, are we going to decide it in regular council meetings? Are we gonna have? Are we going to have special council meetings to decide how to spend it?
For this rescue plan?
Right.
We probably, the staff, you'll see in the resolutions that the staff. Myself and the attorney will bring recommendations to the council for approval. That these just be council approved on how we use all of these funds.
So the last time we received funds, we voted as to what we wanted. That's where all the equipment came in.
Okay.
Yeah, so it all.
All of the expenditures have been documented with resolutions, and so it'll be very in front of us what we do.
Okay, perfectly.
All right, ordinance and resolutions?
Right, get that back up one second.
Sure.
On the, the uh. On the rental. We talked about staff. Did we?
Uh, it was just FYI.
Okay.
City staff using it, but really it's, I think you've met committees too, right? For city staffs.
City staff committees, yeah, anybody involved.
But is it for city business, or are we saying city staff can use it for personal?
I think it's, it's city business.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Well, I thought we were bringing it personal. That's what I thought we were putting, I had asked to have it on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Or I, yeah.
Don, Donnie asked.
The first item was the update rental agreements. We talked about that.
No, but we, I.
There's number two, it says rental for city staff being free.
Right. Donnie had asked Dana to put it on the agenda. For personal use, a perk.
Oh, I see, I see.
Okay, I know where.
Thank you. I didn't even, like skipping over that, I didn't even. Yeah, so I just wanted to discuss it because when he asked it, that, that, that's actually a really good idea. So. That's why I wanted to just see what all the rest of you thought. I think, you know, during, so seasonal employees while they're working. And then full-time employees all year.
I guess my opinion, I just see city staff. Each of his council members want to use it for something that's. That would be okay.
Right, but it's not like anywhere documented. I feel like you, I feel like we shouldn't just say it's okay. I think it needs.
Put it in the personal committee.
Sure, yeah, maybe this is.
I think it should, you know.
Go for the personal committee, I don't know.
But just so I'm clear, we're saying. Rent free for city business, not personal use.
Personal.
Personal use.
Yes.
So I think we have to.
Right, that's why I brought it up. That's why he asked. He asks the other day. And I said, I can bring it to the council.
Yeah, like if he wants to rent a room for a holiday or something, that is what he was asking Dana.
Okay.
You know, it's like a perk and then you would put it in the personal committee, or perk.
Personnel, if it's a personal, the city staff wants to use it for a birthday party, anniversary.
Yes.
Then to me, you follow the agreement, community rental agreement. It's non-city business.
Right, but we were saying, he was asking, could we add it as a perk to employment at the city? And then we would discuss it. I thought that would be maybe a good perk. But that's why I brought it to you all, to see what you thought.
Right, then we can, so the one item is, or we'll post it to the personal committee and bring it back.
I think if we, we have a company, maybe next month, right, do for council. And I think maybe we get a better idea of. What the thoughts are from staff. If it's something that we decide as a council that we want to do, then we would put it in the handbook, in the writing handbook as. Part of their, their employment benefits. A package that they're allowed.
Donnie said there was discussion at the garage. It's so, I said, it's okay.
So we'll, we'll bring it back to.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Jim, for grabbing that.
Right, uh. First resolution is twenty twenty-one dash eighteen. And this is um, in the agenda, we should probably, word is rescinding ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh three. Which was adopted on twenty-one, twenty-one dash twelve. It says that in the heading too on the resolution, but. So this is all part of our property with S T Ventures of them. Requesting rezoning, it was rezoned from B two to M one. The process of them rezoning it in a uh. Just for use permit. Variance to go to the. Block for two uh. Faving, and that's when uh. Project has been canceled or. Not going forward with it or. So because of that, we're going to go back and resend that original ordinance and, and put it back to the B two zoning.
So one thing I'll note is it's already rescinded, automatically rescinded pursuant to the ordinance. But I suggested you do this resolution just to make clear that the council addressed it. And that the last sentence, the resolution authorizes the clerk. To amend the city's land use map to reflect that prior zoning. So you might never have changed the map because it was so quick. Someone that better forget, you should change it back so that it's. The map, you know, the land use map indicates. Now that prior zone.
So I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash eighteen.
Three seconds. Either comments regarding that. Sent, sending them. Being done, all those by voice vote. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, sign. Root. Item is twenty twenty-one dash nineteen, which is uh. Applying for a grant to the PFA. For the funding for the sewer project. Twenty. Four point. Oh, two seven million. How the funds are going to be set up, it's, it's pretty much. Exactly what the bill language had from the bonding bill. So, PFA procedure standpoint, the city. Has the city of Wordville. Has the legal authority to apply for this grant. So I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen.
Again.
Other comments or jokes, anything else to add to it, or is it pretty straightforward? PFA's. Seeing none, all those in favor, voice vote. Say aye.
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 She's.
Eric, cause I'm wrong. All right, all, all same side. Say no. Next item is resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty, which is. Part of various local fiscal recovery funds under the American Rescue Plan. Hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred is our estimated approximate value. I make a motion, we accept resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty.
Again.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Voice. Voice, aye, aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side. Last item is resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one. This is a acquisition of some real property, out bought C and D. Which is along Sixth Avenue. I'm lost, help, lot C and D, we're part of the River Park subdivision and uh. Those are going into tax forfeiture right now for the city. And we've shared our. Interest in those properties for water, for sewer project. There's a uh line. Going to listation one, which comes from across the highway on the west side. And then it's also the line going from listation one. Down to the treatment. This will allow us that property to uh, to make those two lines go through these, it's two very, very narrow sections there, so. Any other comments, Joe, from your standpoint?
Estimated value of the properties is five hundred dollars per person. Uh, based on the county's estimate, so that's what we. Purchase them for.
I move to approve, approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one.
Second.
Yeah. Any, any other comments? Seeing that, all those, far morning, we need to make sure we write a letter to the county. Our interest in. Making sure that they're aware that we have the sales taken off.
And prepare the letter. It's ready to go, we just have to sign it.
Okay.
Send it with the resolution.
All those in favor, by voice vote.
Aye.
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 Close. Prove. Okay, uh, next we have a discussion from July about the pet ordinance of our. The meeting tonight is just meant to be a review, the additional discussion comments. Such that we can make those changes and come back in September for the adoption. I know there's been uh multiple emails. To Mike from some of the council members and, and those comments are reflected in his. Spots, so. Anybody has any? Comments that weren't addressed that you'd like to have Mike look at?
Yeah, I'd really like some feedback from everybody.
One of the things I've been thinking about is whether we could somehow extract the updates to a lot of the, the. We could extract the pieces that update the animal code from the pieces that are new regarding the chickens. Chickens are new and then looking at the separate, not, I guess, separate items.
Just because it's so much, you mean to.
Cause I think updating the animals is one, or updating our animal code is one thing. Uh, and then adding a new provision approving chickens is a little bit of a separate issue. Um, and that that is new in the conversations that we'd had over the course of the last few months is updating a lot of the additional components around. Dogs, cats. And how you can't have a pet alligator.
It sounded like if they were gonna do it. Right, it would made sense to just redo it because it was so.
Talked about this.
Because it was so dated.
Right, we talked about that. There was also the request to remove the animal licensure.
Right.
So that was a specific request. There was three things, doing the chickens, removing the animal licensing. And.
The multiple.
Multiple pet permits, yeah. So we addressed those three things, but that's a lot. And so then, I suggest you just take a larger look at the ordinance. So we did that, I mean, I, I think. You know, there's a, this is one, this is one where there's a lot of discretion, so. A lot of different cities, we looked at many cities for, to do this, like maybe ten different ordinances. It's a lot of discretion to do whatever you want to do, like not having pet licenses, it was unique. Most cities have pet licenses. Doesn't mean you do, you have, you have to have them though. Um, and so I think that's. You know, I think the chicken ordinance was, I got more direction specifically on that one. And so we tried to fit the re draft or the drafting, many cities have chicken ordinances, so there was a lot to pick from. Tried to fit that to what the specific. Request was, especially in terms of like numbers of chickens and those sorts of things, like the specific elements of it. You know, the remainder of it, we just tried to um. You know, kind of bring your code up to. Speed a little bit. So I guess, I mean, I, I guess I would also say it's understandable when these are long, these are long, long ordinances and there's a lot of revisions. And there's strike throughs and then underline, it's hard to read the ordinance for what the new ordinance language will be.
It's much easier to read it on the Google Doc, like. And that's how I did all this, made my comments.
Um, so generally speaking, when you do adopt an ordinance, that's how it's done. I mean, you can, we could have done what's known as a repeal and replace. You could have repealed the whole animal chapter altogether and then rewrote the whole thing. But we didn't do that because I didn't want to, I didn't think we were authorized to spend that much time on it and, and. You know, we just kind of looked at things, went through section by section, looked at things that were clearly needed updating and then just. Did that with the idea that you could always ask for more changes later too. So with that in mind, I mean, I, I don't know how to really move forward. I know it's long. I suppose you could just focus your comments tonight on the chicken ordinance only. That section of it and then. Do the rest of it later or.
Well, I, I feel like the um. It's not, it's, it's not that long. There's a lot that's crossed off.
Right, right.
So. It, I mean, I feel like it. I feel like we took out the things that should be removed and. It, it feels. Like you said, it's up to date.
A little bit more. I mean, we didn't do a full, this is more like a.
We still need to make a decision on if we're going to do the kennel permit and what, I mean, this is not something like. My, my issue with any of us permitting and going and checking on. People who have chickens or whatever, who's going to do that? We don't have the staff to do it.
Yeah.
So I don't want that. I don't want that in here. Maybe we will eventually, we will probably have better, more staff and, and they're gonna be able to do that, but we don't right now, so.
I think the issue with that more is not that you're going to check on it. But it's that you have the right to check on it. So, once it's in there, like you don't have to get a search warrant anymore to go look, so I mean, if you don't have any kennel permits. You know, it can be puppy, puppy mill USA or an Orinoco, there'll be no way to stop that.
Okay.
So that's why, that's why I would encourage you to at least consider. You know.
Yeah.
Consider, because what that does is it gives you the right to get administrative search warrant, which you don't need probable cause for it to go. Investigate, so I'm not suggesting that you would ever investigate, uh, you know. Out of hand or out of course, like, you know, somebody comes in to apply for a permit, you're gonna really go out and investigate the. You know, but, but if it turns out that you have these requirements in there and you have probable cause that they're violating those requirements, there's complaints from neighbors. You might want to have something where you could have the authority to revoke their permit. You know, so that's, that's more what that's about. I mean, I fully understand. You know, there's not that much, there's many staff here and, you know, that kind of thing, so. That's, I mean, I think it, on the other hand, I mean, is there really gonna be puppy mills? I don't know. I mean. That's, it's drafted so that you have the right to.
Yeah.
And, and by the way, there's criminal statutes that prohibit that anyway.
Sure.
And so then it becomes a police issue. But then you don't have a police force, so then it's like. If, you know, maybe you'd want this extra. Extra ability to go investigate and, and enter the premises.
Okay, so my other. Okay, so, my other question is, do we have the definition? Of kennel in here, so. I don't remember, see if it's probably here, I just want to make sure we have that.
I'd have to look for it here, so I'll look for it.
Otherwise, is there anything else, Jim, there's some definite, some issues that you would probably. Take with the chicken one, you have to look at it. It's not as many as you wanted, and it's not, I feel like there's a few other things that you. We had talked about, but it's been a while.
Yeah, I think, I think we should review with the comments.
I know, but this has been in our packet for the last four months. So, we actually have to do the work.
Oh, I guess.
That's what I'm asking, like, I really want.
We're not looking for a motion tonight.
No, we're not, but I, but I want commitment, and then in September, that will, we have done it, because. Mike and I have been going back and forth on this for months.
So where is the count, are you saying you're holding it up because of me?
No, just every, we haven't been voting on it, do you know what I mean, like, we keep tabling it, and it was my idea last time, because we got so late, but I'm just saying, like. We just keep pushing it, I don't want to keep tabling it every month. And I know you have specific thoughts on it, that's why I want to make sure you have.
Yeah, and I want to just make sure that. That my edits are in here as well. Have been included.
They're on, if they're on, did you edit them on the Google Doc? Right, well, it was shared with everyone, so.
His comments on the Google Doc were.
Well, no, I mean, on the Google, the Google Doc was shared with everybody, right?
I don't know, I assume.
Right, right, yeah, long time ago, I think. It's been a while.
So, I mean, you're not adopting it tonight, so instead of spinning our wheels here. What I'd suggest is. We can consider this a first reading, which, to do a first reading, all you really, I think you have to do two readings under your code. Under state law, you don't have to, but. This can be considered a first reading, and we can revise it and bring it back for final adoption. Next time, I mean, I'm comfortable enough, I mean, I've done a lot of dog issues over the years, I'm comfortable enough that this is pretty normal language for the most part. So. I think you could, if there's individual council members that want to make. Revisions. I think I would just have to use my best judgment with Geraldine to determine whether or not. Those are so substantial, where we need to go have another discussion about it before we adopt it, or whether they're minor enough. Where we don't, things where I really can't tell, are things like the number of chickens. Because like, that can be whatever you want it to be, and if one council member wants. X, and the other council member wants Y, well. Okay, you know, I don't know, so, the kennel, kennel is defined, it's in order to keep three or more than one species. On one premises with the intent of breeding, raising primarily for purchase of sale, so it's basically a commercial business.
Okay.
So you could have, you could have like twenty dogs in Oronoco after this.
Well, let's not encourage that, Mike. Alright, thank you.
So is that reasonable?
Yeah, I just want everybody to think about, like, are we gonna do, get rid of the licensing, that's, that's one of the other big ones.
Well, that's what I was directed to do, so.
Yeah, and that's what we, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
And Rochester doesn't do it either.
A lot of local areas are getting away from it.
Over ten years ago.
And I guess I would ask, so are my, are my comments included in here, because before, it was just a chicken ordinance, but now this is, this is all together. Well, I took that original document to help create this. I'd have to go back and look, it's been like four months.
I know, that's the problem, when we do it so long.
But when I first, we first started drafting it, we did use that, there were like minutes from reading the two of you had, or summary of that. And that's what we used to draft it, so I assume yes, but.
So, when we come back in September, will you have this in ordinance forms? Okay, that will be.
Yeah, but if there is comments, though, you know, especially on things like the, the number. You know, it's gonna be difficult to move forward until that's all resolved, so.
Can you, can people individually email you, I think that that's what we were asked to do, to email you. In the meantime.
Yeah, Lizzie emailed me, you emailed me.
Yeah.
So, the other thing I can do is put it, what sometimes I do to help people read it, is highlight the, highlight the new language in red. So that you, when you read it, you know, the crossed out language. Is not, you just read the red writing. So I can do something like that and send that out, to make it easier to go through it.
So as you go through this, you can reference the comment numbers, if you have more comments about the comment that is or now, or if you have. New comments, too, so.
Yeah, I left those in, and some of those are just me making a comment as to why I changed something. Why I changed it, so if I sent, email it out, looks like the red highlighting, and make it a very clean, ready to adopt form, I'll send this one, too. So you can have it in both forms, you can read the comments, and then, and then I will try to go back and find that original. Jim, and yours, original.
Okay.
So the one thing I do, one of my comments, and I just want to bring it to everybody's attention, we do have farm animals that live in town. Um. They've lived here for a long time, they're right behind us in City Hall, so what, so that's why I asked about like, do we need to include that in our ordinance? Somehow, like that grandfathered it, like.
Big grandfathered it on the series of people that have.
Right, so is that, is that, right?
Isn't, really?
I don't.
I guess I would question it, and this was before third time, because, no, I, I, yeah, I mean, I. Had horses. And my zoning changed without me knowing it, I went from ag to residential. And then understood that I couldn't have horses on my acreage. So, I, um. So that's a comment in here, I guess that hasn't been resolved, you asked that question, and I wrote. Generally, farm animals should not be allowed in residential properties, which is generally true, I mean, you're gonna have problems if. You just allow it carte blanche in residential areas, because Oronoco's a strange town, where it's got big lots, and then it's got really small lots that are next, you know, it's got both. So you're gonna have to account for that. It is not possible to single up one specific property such as, and use the name of the person who you brought up, that has the farm animals. You could set up other exceptions in this section, such as allowing. Properties zoned agriculture to have farm animals, and allowing the animals on the property of a certain acreage, which is true.
And is it zone, I mean, this property is huge.
Would there be any city property? Zoned ag?
I don't know, what is it, Ryan, where?
I don't know.
We have no ag property in the city.
In city limits. Okay, I was just asking that as a question. Talking about, I'm pretty sure that's city limits. Maybe, but I think setting it, if you really wanted to allow that, ask yourself what properties have that right now, and how big are they? I'm assuming people don't have horses at a half acre property. Is that what they have?
Yeah, there. I know that there's some. There are some spots that are over a half acre, yeah, that have animals.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they're hard.
Under a half acre, though?
Under what?
Under a half acre, you're saying?
Over, yeah.
Okay, I mean, probably over an acre, right, I mean.
Oh, yeah, I mean, the ones I'm thinking of are well, well over an acre.
Right, so, you know, one, one way to go about that is to look at that and say, well. The current properties that have them are all at least this many acres. Ask yourself, what's a reasonable number of acres? You know, that the property would be allowed to have them, and I think that's a legally enforceable exception here. Because you're basically saying, I mean, I'm sure other cities have that in agricultural zones, but if you don't have agricultural zones. You know, you might want to allow them as an exception to certain larger properties, I think once you're allowing, you know, any farm animal to be on a property of an acre or less. You might run into problems with the neighbors and nuisance conditions and that sort of thing, so, but that's, there again, I mean, that's not. I mean, I can create something, but I don't know what you want, I mean, you know, I haven't done the work into looking at that particular property, I don't have a purse liking for it, I don't know.
It's just, I think it's one of the properties, you know, the town built up around, you know what I mean? And I used, in River Park, there used to be two donkeys that lived by me. No, they weren't, they're very loud. But, you know, so there's.
That was one question I had in that same paragraph. Comment ten. Is that we really don't have a definition of a farm, we have farm animals.
Yeah.
One of your questions was. Is it being used as a farm, what's considered to be a farm?
Well, farm animals are defined. So. It doesn't talk about farms, it's just talking about farm animals.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, you could go at another section that says farm properties, and farm animals are allowed as an exception on farm properties, and I can define that. But then you get into just creating an definition, which you can do, but I need to know, like, how are you gonna do that, is it by size, is it by. Proximity to other densities, you know, that gets into fact gathering, and, you know. And draft whatever you want, but I don't know what, I mean, that's, it's unclear to me, how do you want to. Do that. But I do agree, I mean, if you, if the council's all dead set on allowing certain. Properties to have farm animals. You know, if you adopt this ordinance, they're not gonna, you know, that prohibits that right there, so.
When I think of farm animals, I think of, you're, it's a commercial business, as opposed to just. The other farm animals, but they're, they're recreational type, versus not.
I mean, colloquially, I think of it farms as businesses, and farm animals as normally being at farm businesses, but occasionally being, but chickens are farm animals, too, if you have an urban chicken.
You can come up with that definition.
Well, yeah, I mean, what do you want?
In a residential property.
Yeah, I mean, what do you want the definition to say, like, how, how do you want to regulate that, that's kind of a. You know, I would need some ideas, there's some facts, you know, some parameters, I mean, I can just draft something, but you might not like it, you know.
Well, in your, in your ninety-one point zero zero three, you talk about farm animals.
So, that's that they're illegal operating.
Right, that's why I mean, that's why I brought it up.
Well, if it's not a zoo, if it's not a veterinarian, you're not licensed for exhibition. Well.
I mean, the other way to deal with it is a permit, you just said, you get, you know, the exception is gathering a farm animal permit. And then you have criteria to get the farm animal permit, like, the city has an inspection, which you might not want to do, the city, you know. There's a, they'll be housed in a reasonable distance and discretion of the city, they're not annoying neighboring property, you don't want to do permits, though, so. That gets tough.
No, well, no, licenses. We don't want your licenses, but permits is something we might. Consider doing, I think we all understand, we all think that. Okay. I'm clear.
I am concerned that we're updating these codes, while we're also trying to add chickens into them. It's a lot to do with one thing, and in an ideal world, it'd be great to update our code and add chickens as. Distinct parts.
I like that, I'll be encompassing.
I don't know how, I don't know how, how the lawyers do it, I think.
Well, you could, you could have a separate, you know.
We've already started, so it's like, why would we stop, and we paid for it?
Yeah.
That's the issue, you know what I mean?
Separate urban chicken ordinance.
I think we started this process before you were voted in, so you're, 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 you're right, but you're too late.
And then we have one. Right. Well, I mean, a lot of cities, I mean, I do with a lot, I mean, a lot of them do have everything in the same. Section, but not. You know, or multiple sections, I mean, generally, they don't. Separate out dogs, and then chickens, and then, you know, other animals, it's kind of. Although I would say the dangers, the one thing I'm most familiar with is dangerous dogs, and those are sometimes separated out from the animal organs, it's a separate, whole separate thing. And here, I've done a nice one.
Okay, if we permit the farm animals, will we be, will that allow for, like, temporary goat grazing and that sort of thing?
Well, yeah, I mean, you'd have to really think about, if you're gonna permit the farm animals, you're gonna put some thought into that.
We, that whole thing that you just mentioned was on the list, we did say we weren't gonna bring that up, remember? We had people ask us that, and we said, okay, we're just doing chickens and this ordinance, but yes, that was one thing that people had asked about as well.
Right, but now we're not just doing chickens in this ordinance, we're doing all of the things that have to do with animals in the city.
Sorry, no, we were revising, we, we had decided to revise the entire thing and add chickens, but we were like.
And I think we're doing that because there are situations that, that weren't that bad. I mean, I remember, there was three things, it was removal of the multiple pet permits, just delete that out. And then, removal of pet licensing, or like dog licensing, generally move that, and then add a section of our urban chickens. And then we looked at it, and we came back and had a second meeting, and I suggested that these other. Kind of cleanup revisions for the code. Which was approved, so that's what we did, I mean, I, we can redo it, I mean, I don't. Move the chickens to a different thing, move dangerous dogs to a different thing, part of it, though, is that I think your, your code is a small code, generally, like. You don't have a, it's not like the city of Minneapolis where you got, you know. Multiple different codes and huge sections and all that. So, and I think ultimately, too, what I would say is that it means the same thing, whether it's codified together or separately. You know, the language, you know, if you just want to focus on the. Chicken. Just, just read that section, I don't think it really relates to the other sections directly, and just, you know. Things like that, and focus on the facts of it, the details that they told me to put in it, like the number of chickens, which, you know, I haven't researched, you know. Just what other cities do, but I don't know how much noise one chicken creates versus ten chickens, you know, no clue, so.
I guess I look at this as. I mean, we spent quite a bit of money to get to this point, and I look at the ninety-one section of animals. The same way we look at one fifty-one codes, with all the different zoning ordinances and different. Circulations that go into our zoning codes, and I think that's, it's the one place you go to look for everything, and this is a, is a. The one stop place to look at anything related to animals. And if we want to add something in later on. Divested goats or something like that, we'll just add that to it, whatever.
So, I mean, in terms of that farm animal, like. I guess I'm confused as to what you want there, you want to allow farm animals, or just delete that provision out, just allow them, not make them illegal?
Well, let me ask, how do you? How would you word it, to have the current animal's grandfathered in, is that understood, or do you need to stipulate that?
Well, I don't think, I mean, it's not a zone, this is not a zoning ordinance, so I don't think there is any, like, non-conforming use for animals, that applies to land and buildings. They're not animals, so, I don't think, because then you get into an equal protection due process sort of thing. So certain residents are gonna get farm animals, but other residents aren't gonna get farm animals, access to farm animals. And so I'm not sure that passes. You know.
But isn't it a building, isn't it a building thing, I mean, I know in Rochester, there's pockets of places where there have been old farms still in the middle of, you know, and there's animals, so isn't it more of like? What was that?
Well, it may have been zoning, like, the easiest, and all those places are probably zoned ag, or at least like trans, some sort of transitional zoning.
Well, I just, I mean, I don't. I just want to resolve this without.
So that one property, where is that zone, is it residential?
Yes, I don't, it must be.
Yeah, it's right across the street.
Right over here. So, okay, so.
But it was backed up to, you know, the lake.
Right.
It used to be a lake.
So, I mean, if it's, that's all residential, and all the other properties throughout town are zoned residential. You know, you have to put some objective, not subjective, like, people who have now get to keep them, but when they die, they can't get new ones. You know, there have to be some objective standards and criteria for how you're gonna allow that. Either in terms of criteria to be issued a permit, or criteria. To just have the animals, which would be more logical, like, if your property is, you know, no farm animals unless your property's an acre large, something like that. I think that's safer, really. Well. Put it, acreage limit. Yeah. I mean, it's, okay, we had an issue once with the pot-bellied pig, that was a service animal, it was a three-hundred-pound pig. Living right in downtown St. Charles, and they got, it's a long story, but that caused a lot of problems. Living next door to other people, I just keep thinking about that, so. If you want to just take it out and allow it, and just hope people are reasonable, you can do that.
Well, my issue is, I mean, it's been here for, it's been here forever, nobody even knows it's there, you know what I mean, like, you're, you work across the street from it, you don't even know it's here. So I'm not, I don't think it's an issue, I just don't want anything to come up where.
Yeah.
You, you know what I mean, I just want to make sure we covered our bases, because we are saying they're not legal, but they're here, so then I don't want to make that.
Aren't they legal right, illegal right now under your code?
I don't know.
I mean, that doesn't look to me to be underlying language there, that looks to be already existing language. So.
But like, everybody that owned more than two dogs was doing, was illegal, too, in this town, you know, it's, it's unreasonable, it was, we had an unreasonable. And that's why we're three bites.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, I, I guess I didn't take it out because it's already there, you'd have to tell me to take it out, or tell me to change it, but.
Which is why I brought it up.
Yeah, this is what gets, what happens when you start looking at stuff and say, oh, that doesn't really make sense. So, anyway, that's all I can really, I mean, I can change it however you want, but. So, anyway, that's all I can really, I mean, I can change it however you want, but it's gotta be a consensus of council too, if not tonight, you know, I bring it back, if I just change it and go, try and set some standards for owning farm animals in town, I can, could do that. You know, and then bring it back, and you might end up having to revise it again, but, or just leave it the same, I suppose. Just leave it like this, I mean, if it's been that way for however long it's been. So, and there might be other things like that too, so nobody's brought that up, other things like that, so. We don't have to beat it at, or should I just put it in the, yeah, that's definitely a pun, unintended pun, so, we could just leave it as is, I'll put it in the final form, and we can just talk about it the next month, and maybe change it, maybe not, or, you know, I don't know.
Maybe you take your best stab at that whole thing.
And just allowing farm animals in certain cases.
Put in acreage, if you, if we allow, put a certain number of acres.
I didn't say one.
I, I would, I would say it, like, higher acreage, I don't know what that number is, but, and then proper facilities for care.
At so.
Exist, proper existing.
Proper existing facilities are proper.
What's that?
That would be existing facilities.
Yeah, but I mean, if there's someone who's on a six acre lot, and they wanna have a horse, a horse, and they can build a beautiful barn, I mean, I, I think if we put in language about how the animals have to be kept and.
And this would be only in residential, right? Would all these properties that would wanna have these be residential, or would any of them be commercial or manufacturing? I can't imagine they would. So, you're, I can limit it that way too, just residential. And why don't we just look at how many acres that one property is, just to find out what it is? Yeah, I mean, at a certain point, your property is small enough, you probably shouldn't have a horse, I mean, right? Quarter of an acre, do people have horses on quarter acres? Probably not.
What about the temporary permit thing, or a goat grazing too? Do you wanna bring that up, or is that included as part of that conversation?
It's not.
Okay.
This time.
I didn't add, I mean, you can always add.
I want, yeah, I, I think that's, alright.
Urban chicken was a big thing ten years ago, and we updated some codes with that, so is goat grazing now the thing? Is that the next new thing?
Yep.
Buckthorn's been the same.
People are, people are doing it.
Is it, is it to what, to the environmental?
To clear buckthorn. It's a, it's to clear buckthorn, it's like a rental, you do it for a couple weeks, they eat all your buckthorn, and then you send them home.
Alright, so you better, I'll fix that one, and then put it in the form, and I'll email it out. Go back to public works.
Don't rush this. Eighty bar the doors, it's happening, so.
Okay.
We do our flagging tomorrow night, and hopefully everybody can make it, and, uh, I'll go from there, Thursday starts Friday, so. Public Works, we have a bid for, quote, for removing a tree by the, by the fire department.
Hi. Thanks, our tree guy. Yep, unfortunately, this tree's gotta come down, it's hanging over our generator, our fire hall. It's not on city property though. So. I need the okay to cut, I need the okay to cut somebody's tree down, it's on private property, yes.
I'm like, oh boy, we got a big problem. Hey, I moved to spend the twenty-four hundred dollars to cut the silver maple down.
Any other comments? All those in favor, so you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. Approved. These roads, we have our update, uh, partial payment approval. Joe, do you wanna make some comments?
Yeah, this is a partial payment for the retaining wall, um, it's a big construction of the wall, it doesn't include the fence or restoration at this point was processed end of July, uh, but the total is a hundred and four thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-five cents, again, it's a partial payment, there'll be another pay request, uh, probably next month to make final uh, payment, there are a couple punchless items that need to be addressed, um, and of course, the.
Can you talk about those items? Because I have, can you talk about those items? Because I have, I have some questions on it too.
There's a couple items that I'm aware of, um, one, color of the wall, um, the color of the wall was picked out based on the Sherman Williams sample, and contractor got the stain and sprayed the stain, and it looks different than we thought it was gonna look, but, uh, the contractor uh, had to go get a, another gallon of the same stain mixed at a different location, and it matches exactly what, what that stain is, and so we don't know if it's just the way that that stone takes the color, or if they used a different color at St. Mary's, um, or if it's age, or if it's dirty, or.
Are you saying he put it at a different location and turned out the same color as ours did?
No, same, same wall, there was one more stone that had to go.
We expected.
Yeah.
So. I would say that's on the contractor.
No, 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 so there was one more stone that he, an end cap that didn't get painted initially, right?
Okay.
So, he went, bought the stain, sprayed all the wall, he needed one more gallon of paint to paint the end cap, so, he went back to Sherman Williams, had the same stain mixed up, brought it back, and it matches exactly what was stained initially.
So.
The selection that we had for the, the palette from Sherman Williams, where the stain that they use on these stone walls, there's, there's two colors, one was this terracotta, whitewashed terracotta, another was an Aztec sand, and the Aztec sand, and they did paint one wall, this happened fairly quickly, um, so they painted one with an Aztec sand, and it was really a, a yellow color, and this was the, the other color, the alternative they had on this palette that we could choose from. And that was the only really two other than going to some darker browns or something like that, so. I took the palette, I took the palette, went to St. Mary's Hall, or the wall at St. Mary's, the second street across from where Virgil's used to be, and I took pictures, and I think I sent it out for comments to the council to look at, I said, this is what we have, I had the paint sample with the color wall, with the St. Mary's wall, so we said, okay, let's go with that one, cause it was, it was close to a limestone color. So, we got the gallons, we painted it, and my first reaction was, that's not what we wanted, so we had, uh, Mackenzie, the engineer from Sand Tech, he took, uh, took a, he took the sample back, and we confirmed at Sherman Williams that it was in fact exactly what we wanted with the terracotta, and so that's what it turned out.
I, I just wanna say that I drove past, Jan called me, I drove past St. Mary's shortly thereafter, and I, I wish I wasn't driving, so I could have taken a picture from the road, looking at the wall at St. Mary's across from where Virgil's used to be, and driving past here, it's the same color. It's, it's not, if, maybe it's different, cause this is new, and that's not, but it's, it's just, it's.
How the sun hits, it makes a difference, lots of factors.
Different. Weather or what?
It, it very well could be just from, you know, sitting out, but I, I and I, I think it's, I think it looks very nice, and I think when we discussed as a council, the color, we talked about that color, and.
St. Mary's, we used as the.
Yeah, one, any of the rocks, kinda making it natural looking, like the rock.
Limestone color, which I think it is, and I also remember saying, we all agree, none of us have time to get out and pick, paint colors together, and this is, this is kind of.
The council with Kay and I looking at it.
So, as, as there isn't much out there for, for citizens sitting, we did discuss it as a group, we did make a decision as a group, and the color looks very close to what St. Mary's has from the road going west across the street, and then driving north this way, it looks very similar.
So, the one comment that Jen had about the bent pipe, were you, were the?
I, I am aware of that, I did talk to the contractor about that, in fact, when they're installing it, and they said they're gonna replace it, I looked at it again tonight, and they didn't. They just painted over it, so, that's one of the punchless items that they'll, they'll need to address. I kinda think they probably didn't have the appropriate tools on site to make the radius, and.
Are we holding money back?
Uh, about twenty-five thousand dollars, so, yeah.
So, the other comment, and John, if you, Joe, if you'd explain, uh, the wall was cut off straight, going into that wall, and the expense of having to put in more wall to do the terrace effect, we needed that base support to extend that wall further into the, into the wall, into the dirt, I guess. So, that's one reason why it was, you know, it looks, it looks nice on the VFW end, but on the other end, we had a solid wall going into it, and it didn't, didn't slope away like the one, like it does on the VFW side. So, in my mind, I think that's, if we did the best we could, it's a straight wall going in on the south end, that's, uh, it's not Jan's property, it's Herb's property. And Herb said he likes the wall, he's putting in the wall boards, landscaping it, and I think it's gonna look very nice, and that's the way Herb likes to do things. The, um.
He had some existing landscaping there, or trying to work with, and Herb's been good to work with, frankly, from, you know, what I, my limited interaction with him, Mackenzie dealt with most of it, but.
So, one question I would have is, are the drawings that, that Joe, that you gave us, um, are those the drawings the contractors were presented with that they had to bid on? Or was there something different where it showed going into the hill?
That, that, they, they do get, that's the construction documents that they bid off of, and so every, every, there's three um, manufacturers of block that were pre-approved, every manufacturer has a little bit different block size and configuration. And so that manufacturer, because they're all different, they have to go through a design process, so the low bidder picks a manufacturer, you know, of those three, they get quotes for that, and then they come in and they do their design, and submit that as a shop drawing that we review and approve, so all of those three manufacturers are a little bit different, and so that's why that, that process is like that. And so, all the walls come.
I, I thought we said the kind of block that we wanted, that we wanted a big block.
We did in terms of the face, but in terms of, uh, the width and the depth of that wall, you know, how, and how they stack and how they tie together, they're different. It's different from manufacturer to manufacturer to manufacturer. And so that's why you can't, you can't design it specifically, you know, every one of them's different unless you're gonna pre-approve one guy to do it. One, one manufacturer block.
But in the design documents, because Sand Tech did the, the design document to say, here, these, these are our requirements, they need to go off of, no matter what block they would use, I would think they would have to go based on our requirements, correct? You know what I'm saying?
They do, the block has to meet the specification and.
But doesn't the wall have to have a specification, you know, so what, what I'm hearing is, we didn't call out that they have to tie it in to the hill.
Terrace it.
Or terrace it down, or whatever, I personally, I, I think, I don't like the looks of the other end with the boards. Personally, I don't, and, and I hear what you're saying, it's not on Jan's property, but I, I will tell you personally, I think it looks kinda half-done. The property owner.
Herb has got a firm plan of now, he's.
Yeah, I did, I drove by it.
He's like, he's, he's putting landscaping in it because he wants to make it look nice, we could have left it grass for Herb to take care of, but I think Herb wanted, so it didn't, didn't wash, so.
But I think the question is more, why didn't they step it down?
Right.
Versus cut it straight off when the plans that you gave them were stepped.
That, that's where I'm, that's where I'm getting, cause, cause we paid you, your company, to create what we got here, these drawings, right? And, and in, in our pictures, we, we see this as stepped out.
That type of soil, topographic, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean.
But it's based on what they need.
What's that?
But it's based on our needs, I mean, right? You're showing us the pictures of this is what you're going to have.
Right, I mean, this, this was an example of, of what we is the way I took it, cause both, both of these that we're seeing are stepped down, and.
I think the mayor put that together, didn't you, Marlon?
Cause even this is step, that's kinda step, and it goes with the contour.
Right, you're right, the topping, the ground is going away, but in our case, the ground wasn't going away, it comes straight into a solid hill. So, that's why it ended up being a solid wall.
So, what you're saying is they're solid hill right here? Where our, where his, you know, his property and her property, you know, cuts off. I mean, I just thought it was kinda funny that it wasn't, you know, tied in more, because to me, the way the way they did it, it seems kinda half-assed. And, and we paid a lot of money for it, you know, I, I don't, you know, I don't think we got necessarily everything that we, we paid for, the city paid a lot of money for that. To me, it looks undone. That's, that's my.
No, so I, I, you know, I think, um, when you said terrace, I thought that he was talking about the wall buried in heights from six feet to five feet to four feet, so what they did to make it the way it is, they put the terrace down, and we can't see it. So, they, the difference in the height, they started out at five foot, ground below ground, and then they brought it up the one row, and then continued on, and so essentially, what you see on the top is all one solid line. So, they took, they took what was gonna be up on top, and essentially, they put it down below the ground, the difference in the height, that's why the wall is one solid, one solid.
So, you ended up with a, you ended up with a little bit more surface of wall, or face, face of wall than, that, you got more face of wall than what was on the original drawing because of how they just did what, just, just what Ravel said.
I mean, so really, they came up with their own design, and to me, it was, I, I look at it as it was changed, you know, it just seems undone. It, it really does, for that, for that kinda money. That's my opinion. I, I like the other end, the other end looks not, I am nice.
Okay, um, so, I make a motion that we pay the first request for payment number one for a hundred and four thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-five cents from our capital works fund, public works fund, so. For a second. Alright. I do think it's, uh, the wall itself is, um, I appreciate Lori's comments, I, I think that a lot has to do with the, with the sun on it being versus shade, which is why you see a lot of St. Mary's. I think that's what makes the difference too, I do think, you know. We had to put the wall in the safety aspect of it, and because the wall is one, one level now, I think that helped improve the slope as well, um.
I think it's a vast improvement from what it was.
Yeah, it's a vast improvement, and it's, I think that, uh, I think it grew on us, and I think Herb will do a great job of landscaping at the other end, and you probably won't see the straight wall after all, after all he has is landscaping, so. Any other comments? All those in favor of the payment signifier saying aye, aye, oppose. That's our speed table, so, a lot of good information that was given to us. Not only the. We have now both the speed data from the eastbound and westbound on West Center Street. The east center. The eastbound was in your packet and the westbound was sent out to an email that we got here uh. Friday, I think it was. So the average speed highlight, if you go to the uh. Extended speed. Yeah, the extended speed summary sheet that shows our. Average speed was twenty-nine point eight four miles per hour. The speed limit was thirty miles an hour. There was some instances of over. Forty, I think. But it was uh. Sergeant Chambers, anything else you can add to it was just.
If there's any questions, I'm not the one that actually sets these up. We have a deputy that does that, but I looked at the. The statistics or the data, I guess, that you guys have. What was told to me is kinda the most important thing is that speed summary, uh, which gives you your average speed. Sure, there's gonna be. People that are gonna go over that. There's gonna be people that are under that. But it's an average speed of what's going through there for you guys to consider as far as your planning goes.
Well, this area isn't even involved in the planning.
Sorry.
This area that we.
Okay, this was um.
This is West Center Street, so that's not involved in the speed table planning. It was more. We're have we're having vigilantes chasing after people.
Oh, yes.
So I was, my question to you is, has that been resolved? Is that better? Is have people been contacting you?
I haven't heard of anybody that's called and and complained that at least it hasn't been brought to me. That's been my recommendation from the beginning, if that's going on. And that's why West Center was one of the ones we did first with some of the issues that are going. On there and some of the complaints that people are following, their signs being put up and things like that. There's. Green arrows or something were put over the speed spot uh, speed sign. So. Um, that's the data from West Center. We haven't got out to anywhere else yet. Um, like I've said, told you before. We have one speed sign for the whole county and we have to kinda share that with the other cities and stuff, but uh. What's that? Yeah, you're on the list, yeah. Yep. And I mean, we can make that happen. Anytime, but I I think it can give you an idea of, you know, sort of. What people, I guess, uh, think people are, how fast people are going and what people are actually doing. Um, it it can be deceiving when uh. You, most people go twenty-five through a place, a lot of times. At least I I think of myself when I'm driving to a residential area. Uh, I'm usually driving slower than the thirty mile an hour speed limit, no doubt about it. And if people are walking, common courtesy is to move over and go slower. Um, so I think when people are doing thirty, thirty-four, thirty-five, that does look a lot faster in my opinion.
So initially, and you weren't here, it was um, Corporal. Yeah, she just wanted my word, yeah. So she she shared with us that just statistically. Well, cuz our initial, my initial thought was we need to lower the speed limit. Like, that's just what we need to do. And she said, unfortunately, it's shown. That that doesn't change how fast people go. She said changing the structure of the street, the actual physical structure of the street or whatever. And then they. And then Minnesota Department of Transportation on their subsites says the same thing. So then that's basically why we went in that direction. Now. Initially, like I said, I was all, I was, I approached council with changing the speed limit. But we need to, I don't know. So I don't, I guess I don't know where we go from here cuz it seems like there's just. There's people that are more worried about their cars than are worried and their boats than are worried about humans. And I don't know how to reconcile that. Um, I don't know how to please them.
I I don't think that's, I don't think that's necessarily true, what you're saying. I just don't think people. Want a speed bump. I mean, I wouldn't wanna speed bump up up in our neighborhood. I wouldn't wanna be the snowplow plowing over a speed bump. Or with a table. And I don't necessarily think that every street needs to be twenty or twenty-five miles an hour. My opinion is is if people start getting hit in the pocketbook or they're they're on camera and, you know, you can get their license number or. Whatever and they start being held accountable.
But how do we do that, Jim? Are they told us they cannot cover that time? So the times that the people are saying that this is the problem. Is the shift change. So they said they just can't be there.
I think we're seeing some of it here that might help us.
That's a different street.
No, I I'm I'm saying any street that we do this on. West Center is just as important as River Park, just as important.
Right, but we can't, so we can't do, so we talked about. West Center is like, yes, we recognize there's obviously a problem, but that road's being torn up. So we couldn't visit, you know, we decided we're gonna concentrate on the. Roads that aren't being torn up. Which is during the project, I mean, during the search of sewer project. So we can't, you know, we're like, well, we definitely don't wanna. Put anything there that would, you know. So I guess I don't, I I'm all for, what I really think would be a good idea, and I can't remember the, I don't know who sent it, but I think. A neighborhood meeting or planning would would have been a good step in between making a decision or getting more more peoples. I had so I had a lot of individuals reach out to me. But I haven't, and and that was, I mean, it's been going on for a while, a long time, for months.
And I think that that. One of the things that's hard in our position um, is that the most vocal people. Have been the people complaining about speeders. Uh, it's, it's been four months. We've been hearing the neighbors complain and people are speeding and what are you gonna do about it? And people are gonna, you know, get hurt or get killed. And you need to do something, you need to do something, you need to do something. And so. We vote to do speed bumps, which could be a temporary fix. They, I mean, we're talking to Kane like. This isn't a permanent solution and we know that we need to do something. But then. We make a decision and out of the woodwork come the people that don't want speed tables and. Um, and now we're getting blasted from that angle.
Snowplow people are blasting and saying, okay, we're gonna have to charge you more, you know, whatever it might be. I think we're creating more problems.
But what's the solution? And and as I have said, for the last four months. Every single person is saying, I'm not speeding. No one, no one is speeding. So out of the study in West Center, one person was speeding. I I mean. So maybe that's true. Maybe no one's speeding and maybe we're beating a dead dead horse again.
Yeah, well, and I think too, this went in after. After that neighbor up there put signs up, whatever. Yeah, it was very rudimentary, but I think what it did do, I can't say I agree with it, but what it did do is it. It made people aware that, hey, you gotta slow down. You know, cuz I mean, and and that was the guy who got hit. So I I understand why he's doing that. But this, that went in after those signs, right? So I think people were already being made aware.
I don't wanna encourage. I don't wanna encourage other people to do what he's doing.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that. Let's just forget that. But what I'm saying is this went in after that. So aside from what he did, I mean, that's.
Again, we're not talking about the same street.
I know, that it could be any street Dana is what I'm trying to say. And I think that's what Lori is saying. So we. We make this fix and then we create another problem. You know, and and you're never gonna make everybody happy.
I guess my biggest thing, and I've said this to Mr. How is that? Like, I'm never going to, I'm never gonna care more about your car than a human. That's just not who I am. I'm never going to be that. So I'm always gonna vote. For the safest thing for human beings, not a snowplow, not a UPS truck, not your boat.
I get it. You know?
Well, I don't, I don't think people, I don't think people want to be assessed.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I apologize. That's not the point. There's going the speed limit. It's a perception issue. If you walk next to a car that's doing thirty miles an hour, it seems fast. The officer has just proven twenty-nine point four average mile per hour. I apologize. I didn't mean to interrupt.
It's a good point. It is. I walk.
Putting in a fix for a non-issue.
Right. I I walk. My wife and I and.
And I do not wanna speed cable.
Yeah.
Period.
But I do agree, something has to be done. And that's why I say over here, how can we do it?
From one side complaint. You haven't heard from the other side yet. They didn't know it was an issue. They didn't know that people were complaining and coming to you. That's why I'm here tonight.
So I just kind of. And just back into what we asked, Chamber to ask was. Just uh, for everybody, on the west speed, on the on the westbound. On the westbound, we put a radar at twelfth lane and the average speed was thirteen point four miles. Information sent to you at the council and and Sergeant Chambers pointed out to me those. The radar is out there quite a ways, so those are cars slowing down for turning into all the residents' driveways or. Slowing down to turn on twelfth lane or shady ridge line in the previous street, so. The westbound traffic is appears to be slower because it's, one is where the radar speeds was placed. And. And all the traffic that comes westbound was turning on Ninth Avenue plus turning in the driveway. So that's why there is less volume. There's less speed.
I would expect at higher speeds, to be honest, though, um, going maybe not as many. But higher speeds with that straightaway there and less turnoffs. I was surprised that it wasn't faster coming through there. With the higher speed uh, on the high end. But yeah, definitely less traffic and cars slowing to turn off and then trying to. You know, give cars a chance to speed up once they get up to on the top of the hill. Um, so where we place it. I was I was surprised not to see higher, some higher speeds in that straightaway.
Cuz I think where it was, it gave, it gives people a chance to slow down. Right, coming by our place, it is like a speedway.
But I mean, yeah, if we're talking about a speeding issue on a road, I'm gonna look at the. The straightaways, the faster spots where people are, aren't going up a hill. And then a couple little hills to, you know, I'm not saying people don't speed, but those same people. Aren't all just turning off. Some of them are gonna continue straight on the straightaways and open it up a little more in my experience with people speeding. So.
I guess one thing I would even throw out there is before we do a speed table or speed bumps or. You know, turnabout isn't an option really where we're talking over there. Do we, do we put some money in cameras? Or is there such a thing that they can? A camera can take a snapshot of a license plate or, you know. Just to focus on on the ones that are doing it and then the word gets around, maybe. I I don't know. I. To try spend less money, create, try not to.
From a law enforcement perspective, there's not a lot we can do with a camera. Not here in Minnesota. I don't, I've heard of other states that do that and that's been questioned. And usually it's done a civil route rather than a. Yeah, I had a buddy that went through Iowa and was going like twelve over the speed limit on a highway and got a ticket sent to the mail, but it was. It was a, it was a, it was a clearly a civil ticket violation. It wasn't anything that was gonna.
You have to prosecute those. I mean, you have to have witnesses and play foundation for the video. I mean, that's not, you're not issuing criminal citations.
We could certainly, you know, people give us a license plate of a speeder, we can go and talk to that person. We can, you know, hey, just, you know, just, you know.
Even even the signs would help. They're certain in the area.
So one question I had for Sergeant is the speed table with a speed sign. Now, is that still available to us or is that going on to its next location?
Well, it goes back and gets charged up and then I'll I'll see where it's at tomorrow night.
Bring it back and and just like we did on West Center Street, we could put on Zumbro Hills and. And Riverwood Hills Drive, just for that confirmation of what speed we do have and get away from this perception and. And publish that information.
Right, yeah, that, I mean, we can definitely make it happen.
Speed bumps or we can, you can hold back on that speed bump motion that we made in July, but I think we knew the. To me, this, the West Center Street is some justification. It's just better getting the information out there. You and I talked this afternoon about possibly if there's somebody that really is. Doesn't believe the data, we could set appointment and you could meet with that individual with your gun and radar gun.
Yeah, I I have a radar. It's a laser.
I just demonstrate to the locals, so I. There was also a sheet in the paper by the radar sign company, of course, it's a promotional for. But they refer to it as um. Driver feedback signs. Driver feedback signs is essentially what we're getting. We're getting two of them.
I think those are great. And I think I've I've seen those work well.
And as soon as we get those, we're waiting, we have five thousand dollars towards, I think the both of them are gonna cost about sixty-four hundred dollars. So we have funds to get two of them. And they'll be mobile, solar powered. We can attach them to the same sign a thirty mile an hour sign is and we can. We can move them around and that's kind of an educational thing too.
So Brandon, can we, can we put speed limit signs on these roads? I mean, I think one of the, one of the things that Chris Powell was saying is that there, there's no signs.
There's one sign and it says slow. That's an objective statement. Slow to you is very different than slow to officer or me.
Yeah, I saw that in your letter. We do have, and Dan Kane, you can speak to that if you like.
Yeah, I was I was told to put a slow sign up, take the thirty down. Previous council meetings, probably.
To take the speed limit sign down?
And we put up the slow sign. That was our remedy at the time. Just like last month, the remedy was speed bumps.
I never, I don't remember that discussion at all.
There was a remedy of flags and signs.
Yep.
Had fallen down, so we said.
They were busted, they were.
Same night, they were put up. They were torn down.
Fantastic.
I don't remember ever talking about taking speed limit signs down, but if we did that, we should, we didn't, we shouldn't do that.
I don't recall that discussion, but.
We can put up all sorts of signs.
Let's just put it with the slow sign. Can we do that?
But that's only one sign on one road, right?
There's very few signs. I took pictures of it one day. I mean, the whole, I did all this driving around over there and that's why my whole solution, my whole. Proposal was to decrease the speed limit because I thought thirty was way too high to begin with. There wasn't enough signs. And that's what I, that's what I brought to council months ago.
And I think so people would argue, you know, is thirty too high? Or as you're saying, it's a, it's a perception.
We have is we have enough construction workers going up and back important elements. They don't know what the speed limit is. They drive, it it is too high.
So part of the justification, and I think we talked about that from Mike's perspective, it reduced the speed sign, or speed limit was to get the data. And so we've got the data off West Center Street. Cuz we talked about what it would take to over the twenty-five to twenty-five miles.
No, we could do a real study.
You have to do a traffic study.
It can't just be our own little one.
I just did this actually, they're now twenty-five.
I saw that.
There's signs up all over the place, so. And they did a study, so I Googled it, cause I was curious after I saw that people put up these signs all over my neighborhood. That it's not twenty-five. Yeah, they did a full-on traffic study to be able to do that, you know. So you could do that. I mean, you could go that step, but that probably. I bet they started that two years ago, the process of.
It's a long and expensive process and according to the corporal that was here and Min Dot.
Doesn't really work.
It doesn't work. So I guess I don't know what to do. You know what I mean? That's why we're, that's why we're at a loss. We're just like.
So I think it's part of education. So we get the sign back. We get the rotation back for Zumbro Hills and Riverwood Drive. To to collect more data, just like you've done here. And I think we uh, no doubt this information. Will be in our city minutes of what the city, what the uh, West Center Drive, West Center Street data gave us. And we'll continue to look at that on Zumbro Hills. And we'll continue to look at that on Zumbro Hills and Riverwood Hills.
What, what's the priority, which one do you, would you wanna do first?
Zumbro Hills, Zumbro Hills is the one that was approached to me by many, cause it's lots, it's close.
Yes.
Homes that are close, little children, and that's the issue, that, and cars are kind of parked on both sides, that's where, that's the people who came to me first. That's.
They have a legitimate.
Right.
Right.
Absolutely.
Right, and so that's the place that we were worried about, um, we know West Center Street. A whole other situation and it's. And we wish it could be. Different, maybe more signs would help there too, I don't know.
Is there?
Quite a few speed signs on West River, or, sorry, West Center that I. Speed signs on West Center, there's, there's, there's quite a few of them.
There's two eastbound and two west.
On that stretch, it's.
Oh, that's more, that's one of those things that unfortunately sounds like more patrol is probably the only thing that's gonna solve that problem.
I can help you with that.
No, we don't need more of that.
So Bill, is there a Zumbro Hills HOA?
Uh, so.
Is there an HOA, Home Association?
Hills, I believe so, I'm not, I'm not aware.
So when we get the data off West, excuse me, so Riverwood Hills Drive and Riverwood Hills.
Riverwood Hills has one, yes.
I think it's Dan Simon.
Are they? There's two different total groups.
Two different HOAs. I just say whenever we get that information, we could share the HOAs.
Dan Simon.
So those residents in the West Center Drive are just. Uh, we, there's no HOA amongst those people, but there's about thirty-five homes or so out there, so.
Um, I saw the other day a kids, kids at play sign, is that something that we, or slow kids at play or something like that, there was, are those effective?
To, to me, to most people, I think so.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, in the meantime, can we put up some of those on, near Zumbro Hills, yes, King?
It's still a warning sign, so just like the slow sign, it's, you don't have to follow it. The only signs you have to follow are regulatory signs, speed limit, stop sign and yield sign.
Right.
Warning signs, arrows, cautions, you do not have to follow. So. One more thing I'll add is that other subdivisions don't have speed limits, River Park, Cedar Woodlands, Riverwood Hills. Those have never had speed limits, some of the connecting roads probably do or did. But downtown area here does not have speed limit signs. Main Street does, West Center does, the connecting streets do.
So if they don't have signs, why can't we? If they don't have signs, do they have to be thirty miles an hour, do we have to go by what everybody else is, or can we make? It twenty-five in River Park and twenty-five in.
Minnesota law, if it's a town considered road, you, the city council can adjust and figure out what that speed limit is, you don't have to go through a study. You can, you can say the speed limit is twenty-five, according to Minnesota law. You have to have a council vote.
Well, that's for our attorney to tell us that.
Well, yeah.
They won't hold on to our attorney influence.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, I didn't think that was the case, but.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, can we, uh, can we make a motion to rescind putting in the speed bumps until we have more data?
But, but can we also, at the same, I'd like to finally amend that. To. Put more signs up. Speed limit signs up, put the slow signs with the speed limit signs. And, and add some more signs to Zumbro Hills and what. What's it, what's it?
Like children at play, you said?
Well, no, I mean, we're, we don't even have a sign right now on the, on that. What can I think of the road, Riverwood, Riverwood, Riverwood area and Zumbro Hills area, can we put more signs, visible signs?
We can do that, we can look at that.
Okay.
You have a slow one there.
Yep.
So I make a motion that we, uh, rescind. The speed bumps for now until we get the data. And add more speed signs on Zumbro Hills and Riverwood Hills Drive. A second. Continue to study it. And. When we get the data, we'll share it with the HOAs, they can disseminate it and we'll talk about it. What we could do here with this West Center Drive, West Center Street data, we could put that into a letter and your. On our Facebook page too, and just make sure. That too as well, everybody should be aware of, I guess.
Sergeant, you're welcome to sit my driveway anytime you want.
Okay. What's your.
So Mike, can you? Can you look up the law on the city council voting for?
I'm almost certain that's not, can't do that, but I'll look it up, yeah.
So Michael, follow up with more background on changing the speed signs, speed limits. Any other comments? It is an education and I think we owe it to our citizens to make sure that we get the information to them and. And, uh, try and educate them, I think, or. Driver feedback signs, which I think is a great theme for them, which will help in that as well. All those in favor, I think probably saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oh. Thank you, all right. Planning and zoning. We talked about everything on one, two, three and four resolutions, or one, two and three. So Brandon Redkey, um, is our next item. So, Mr. Redkey has brought the information to our. Planning and zoning, it was canceled because of the lack of quorum. So his, um. Briefing document that's in our packet is, is a permission to display. Uh, premier portable buildings. That are sold online, and these are just a display at his, uh. Location at six hundred Vintage Road Northwest. And. This is, uh, in my conversations with Mr. Redkey, it's. It's his intent and desire to work with Premier to allow this or to do this. But before he does that, he's looking for some direction from the council on displaying the sheds. That will fit on the gravel. And, uh, that could be twelve, up to twelve or, or less depending on the size, I'm guessing. People would come in, look at him, say, I want the blue one, they go online, they order it. It's built, paid back to the company. And it's shipped from the company, so the display units will continue to stay on. Display. Mike has shared some backgrounds of our M one. Zoning, which is one fifty-one point one sixty-five. Uh, M one limits, which. Everybody's had a chance to read that information in the packet. It's a point number nine. Um, in the M one codes.
Right, I don't, I mean, today we, I sent an email, did everybody get my email? And I, and there was a response that that stuff was already in the packet, but I don't think it was the same email.
Now, the, that was sent out. By email, so I know people have a copy of that.
But there were some emails printed in the packet, but I don't think they were the emails that I, that you need to see in my packet, so. Email I sent today.
Yeah, I was confused.
Yeah. So Paul knew about this issue because he had the planning and zoning. Uh, person. So I kind of briefed him and I was expecting them to handle it and that they didn't have a forum, so that I didn't realize that till today, so. I sent that. Okay, well. Maybe I missed it. Yeah, see, this isn't, uh, I, I followed up with a later email that really explained everything about the zoning. So, um. I wonder if this is just. Hold on. Yeah. So, the email, the two emails that you need are not the ones in the packet, that, that's from June sixteenth and I followed up on July twenty-third. And.
They're in the email that you sent though.
Yeah, I sent this morning, right?
Yeah.
So just go on what's in the emails, so. If you look, so basically, you know, this is an issue where. You know, there's been no zoning application made by Mr. Redkey, he's just asking for a zoning opinion. Which is fine, and I haven't reviewed your code fully on this issue, but I think. The way that's normally handled is your zone, quote zoning administrator would just give the opinion. You know, somebody's asking for an informal opinion about, well, what does this mean in the code? You know, the zoning administrator can just give that and then if they don't agree with the opinion, they can appeal it to the. Planning, planning and zoning in the city council, so in this case, but I don't think you have to do it that way, I think the planning and zoning could issue an opinion without. You know, even if they're not presented with an initial user variance permit, so I think where this is at is, is Mr. Redkey's just asking. What's the interpretation of the code, is this allowed under the zoning or not?
Can we decide that though, we don't have to go through planning and zoning, okay.
Yeah, I, well, because, and I, I think that's important, that's why I'm bringing it up, because this is not a conditional use permit, this is not a variance. Because if this was one of those things, you've gotta go through the process. So in this instance, I didn't know they were putting this on the agenda, but I, I would say. This has been a long time, we prepared them to do this. They didn't have a quorum, so then. You know, it would have taken a whole other month to set, you know, to do this for planning and zoning, so I think you can make a decision. But then I think I'm gonna need to try and explain it to you. Which, it's not that complicated, yeah, so. You know, in all zoning districts, you know, you have to have, to, to do an activity in a zoning district, how, how you use a property. You know, you have to be either permitted or conditional or an interim use, right? Something's gotta be stated in the code that says you can use the property that way, so like, for example, in a residential zone, it would say. You know, single-family residential housing, and in some cities they have R one, R two and R three, and they go. Like R one is just single-family and then R two is single-family or. Twin homes, townhomes or mixed use, and then R, or, uh, multifamily and then R three is like mixed use. You know, you, gas stations and things are added, you know, so you have to look at the code and say, well, what is the property being used as, is that allowed? So, I think the current use of the property is a plumbing business. I believe, right? It's M one, yeah.
Well, it's. We don't do a, you know, we, everything we do is in the field, so it doesn't. We don't run no business out of the building minutes.
So it's a storage place for plumbing?
Yeah, it's just a.
And it's an office, so it's an office space too though, right?
Maybe, not, not really, I mean, it's just a little building sitting over there, but it's, like I said, we don't do any. We don't have anybody there, you know, just for our own personal.
So, but it's been there for a long time. And let's just assume that it's permitted, okay, so it's a permitted use in the M one district. So then the question is, well, now we're displaying sheds on the outside, so is that allowed? Well, you're kind of changing the use, so is it still just a place where you, a plumbing business is run out of, let's call it, say that. Maybe, uh, maybe it is, but you know, if it was so clear, if you had, you know, something in your code where it said. You know, exterior storage of. Commercial items is allowed, you know, as a permitted use, I wouldn't, we wouldn't be here, we would've just given them that opinion. So, the reality is this one, there's some interpretation of the code needed. So, it would almost be helpful if you could put the code language up on the screen, could we do that, or is that not? Like share a screen or something?
Well, it's in, it should be.
No, we can't.
We can, okay. Unfortunately, so I'll just read, I'll just explain it. So, basically. Uh, and this is in the M one district, so it is possible to have two separate uses at the same property that are both permitted. Like a plumbing business can be permitted and then maybe outdoor storage is permitted. And then if it's not permitted, you can't find something that says it's permitted, well, maybe there is some. Conditional use that would apply here and that you could apply, apply for a conditional use permit to do this. Um, and then this third thing is accessory use, so an accessory use is defined in your code. I have it in one of these emails. And I'll just read it.
I think that's what they put on that building was an accessory.
Yeah, my internet's slow here, can't pull it up.
Sounds familiar.
So, but basically, uh, an accessory use, I know enough about it to summarize it for you, paraphrase it. So an accessory use is something customarily incidental to the primary use. So, in this case, you've got, you know, one fifty-one point one six five is the manufacturing M one district. And there is seventeen listed permitted uses, I read through it. And trying to find something that's permitted for that business, and the only thing I could kept up with is parenthetical, two, two things. Parenthetical nine, uh, convenience, retail, wholesaling. Or other trade shops which involve selling products directly from the manufacturer for consumer consumption. Light manufacturing, compounding and assembly. Treatment of the products, bakery goods, candy, cosmetics, dairy products and food products, didn't really seem to apply, but. You're talking about like, selling directly from the manufacturer for consumer consumption, it's not really consumption. But it's directly from the manufacturer to consumer maybe. And then there is seventeen, buildings and uses customarily incidental to any of the above permitted uses. Which will not be detrimental by reason of odor, smoke, noise or vibration, which I think none of these would be, so that would apply. So then the question is, is, are, is the outdoor storage of, um. Sheds like, uh, pre, pre, I'll say prefab sheds, right? Yeah, like pre, prefab sheds as kind of, um. Demo models of those. Is that customarily incidental to a plumbing business? Now, I think you could look at it a couple ways, you could look at it and say. Well, outdoor displays of, of items to for sale is customarily incidental to. You know, a retail or, or manufacturing business, manufacturing businesses do that all the time. You know, they, you know. The Amish furniture stores, they all have, you know, they manufacture stuff there and then they put all the head around, head around like chairs outside, so that would be that, right? Uh, the other way to look at it is, and so you could say, well, this is a business in M one. That sells plumbing supplies and other plumbing services. And it's, therefore it's, you know. Displaying things even though they're not related to plumbing is still incidental to that business, the other way to look at it is. Sheds don't have anything to do with plumbing and it's not really customarily incidental to a plumbing business to. Have sheds outside that are unrelated to plumbing, so. I think you could interpret it either way, and when you can interpret it either way, it's not my job to interpret it. I think, so that's, that's basically, does everybody understand that? I mean, I'm kind of really summarizing here and.
And I, and I think, when it was brought up. Yeah, to the planning and zoning. I, I, I believe if I remember right. We, we thought exactly what you're saying is, it's already, it's already zoned right, they're not permanent structures. They're, they're demo structures. Um, buying them online. So, we, we didn't see any, any issue, but.
Right. Yeah, they asked me, so I analyzed it, that's my analysis of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the other thing is, I didn't see, the last thing is, I didn't see a conditional use that would apply, did planning and zoning find one that? So really, it's either permitted as an accessory structure or accessory use, pardon me. Or it's not permitted, it's not an accessory use, and I'll try and get that definition up, since I'm having. If somebody can get it up and read it, that might.
So, tonight we just need to decide, are we going to permit this or not?
Well, yeah, and, and honestly, there's no application, there's no resolution, I think you just wanna make a, a decision like. Vote that you're going to determine that that use is a permitted accessory use to that primary use or not.
I would like to make a motion that we. Give permission to display these premier portable buildings. On six hundred Vintage Road Northwest.
A second.
Any other comments or discussion, I think it's, uh. I think this is.
And like, like I said, I'm willing if there's any, you guys got suggestions or whatever, it's. You know, like I said, they bring them in and. Make them look nice and all their brand new.
Would it be like on the, I'm, between here in Pine Island, there's some sheds that are gonna be similar?
Well, them are the, kind of the smaller, like something you put in your back, you know, the smaller, like kids' playhouses. Some of these they have are good size or.
I think, Brandon, you had mentioned that they're similar to the size of what you have.
Yeah, yeah, mine's about as, well, mine's a fourteen by thirty-two and you can get a sixteen by forty. So it's a touch bigger, a little longer, a little wider.
Yeah, I think the other thing to remember.
Yeah, I think the other thing to remember is there's other code provisions. I mean, this is just a decision that you can have some sheds outside. If there's other sections of the code that say they have to be so far back from the property line or they can't, you know, there's accessory structure regulations, there might be other rules. So I think what the council would want to do is just limit that opinion that.
As their codes are followed.
As a zoning code rule, it's allowable to do that use.
And how many, yeah.
The use still has to follow it in all their code provisions.
Because you're not, these are not permanent. How many would you have at one time? I think I saw twelve.
Yeah, it's a guess, because we were just talking the front lot where the gravel is.
I, do I have the right property pulled up here, Brandon?
Yep.
Okay.
It's just right, well, it's gravel, no, this is all gravel.
Okay.
It put gravel, but it'd be right near it.
Okay, and that's the shed?
Uh.
That you have, that you're talking about?
Yeah.
So would you repeat the motion? I didn't quite hear all of it.
Can you repeat it? No, I don't know if I can repeat this, well. Very good.
She just motioned to allow him, hold on, see, I went down, sorry.
Just allow the permitted use.
Just the permitted use, Jim Richard seconded. To display.
Okay.
To display them up to twelve.
And follow zoning.
Yeah, subject to all of their code provisions.
Yes, hence why it's with provisions.
Yep.
Any other comments? All those in favor, seeing if everybody's saying aye, 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 opposed? We're good, that's approved.
So then do we, so to find out the code provision, like I guess we asked, we have Brandon ask.
You can come back to planning.
To get help with following them or they're all online, so get questions.
As far as if there's setbacks or anything like that, but they're, they're not.
Quite a ways off the front.
And you've got.
That way there's, so you can see the intersection, you know, and say, we're not going to put them all over there. You know what I mean?
If you, if you want to, you can submit a, a site plan of how you're gonna, where you're gonna put them.
Well, I, I was thinking, you know.
And just submit that to city hall, they can.
I could draw a, I could draw a picture.
Just to make sure that you don't do it wrong and have to redo it.
Right, well, I could draw it on, if I had a piece of paper that they.
You don't need to do it now, just whenever you get to that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just, just draw it up and.
Yeah, for them to get them in and out though, if you see in the driveway, she's got it pulled up here. They, they'd be in there like those. They, they'd be something like that, you know?
Yeah.
That's that way they can get them in and, you know, just once they get them in there. We're gonna, their displays, you can look at them. We're around there a lot too, so we keep an eye on things, keep a neat looking, give it a shot.
All right.
So am I supposed to go to planning and zoning before I bring them over there?
Uh, just bring a sketch into city hall and then I'll let you know.
So can I at least talk to Premier and say that it looks like?
You got to go ahead.
Okay, okay, all right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Wanted to, um, review kind of fitting a council, I think, I don't know if we need a action.
I don't think we have any action items. It's largely just a review of the sewer and water, uh, committee meeting that we held last week. Looking through the packets, do you guys have the eight minutes? I didn't see them, either version of mine, but.
I didn't.
There were gold rush.
Gold rush, isn't it? We didn't have gold rush either. Is that my job?
Well, we did have minutes. Anyway, I'll, I'll spend a little bit more time on the eight minutes, but, uh, in terms of, uh, the first item, the wastewater contracts, one, two and three, the contract are all out for bid. Uh, the, one of the first things that happened is, uh, in conjunction with the solicitation is we had contractors submit pre-qualifications uh, for people that would be, uh, SCADA system suppliers. So essentially the communication and instrumentation that allows the lift stations and the wastewater equipment to communicate to one another. And so, uh, we did have three pre-qualification submittals. Uh, we had three pre-qualifications middle approvals. And so that information was, um, disseminated by an addendum along with some other technical modifications. Um, again, we have, the projects broke up into contract one, and that's the wastewater treatment plant. And contracts two and three is the sewer collection command system. Uh, we did decide based on, uh, some contractor feedback uh, about the timing of the bids to essentially extend the bid date for everybody for contract one. Uh, so the wastewater treatment plant, uh, we extended that a week. And so essentially we'll open those bids on September second, so that was included by addendum. So, you know, we, we continue to get a lot of questions, a lot of interest out there from lots of contractors. Um, and I think that's good. So we'll continue down that path, address the questions. Um, there'll undoubtedly be some more denoms issued to help address those denoms. We try very hard to make sure that we answer questions, we do it by addendum, so everybody gets the same information. In terms of, uh, that, I, I guess that's kind of the update unless anybody has any questions, we can kind of zoom down the, Jim?
So o- one thing that I'm, I'm hearing from some neighbors and, and actually some that aren't my neighbors. They're struggling with, with the whole idea of the easement. They're saying they're, they're asking questions in terms of, okay, what, where is the easement going to be for sure? How big is it going to be? And there's, they're, what they're saying, and I'm just saying what they're saying, is that they're not getting any specifics. And they're feeling like, like the city, and this is what I hear, the city wants a blanket easement on my property. Um, to put whatever they want, where they wanted, but they don't have to tell me now. It doesn't seem like they have any idea. I'm, I'm just wondering if, if you could talk about that.
Yeah, that's under the low pressure item on the agenda, but we'll talk about it now. Um, as you know, we, we, we did have, uh, a fair amount of correspondence that was mailed out to folks in advance of even sending them the easement agreement, access agreement. The access easement and maintenance agreement for the low pressure sewer system. So there was a frequently asked questions document. Obviously, they got the agreement themselves, um, along with several letters and invitation to, uh, for public open house events. Uh, we did mail them, uh, a large map for their individual area showing approximately where this um, low pressure sewer system would be, including the low pressure sewer system and the, uh, and the grinder station. So we are asking for essentially a blanket access agreement that allows us to come in and instruct that facility. And the reason we don't prescriptively describe that is we don't know exactly where that facility will go. For example, we might meet with the property owner and there's lots of buried utilities. There's topographic issues, um, there's maybe trees that people want to protect. There might be, you know, different things that we might meet, meet with the property owner and deciding, oh, the grinder station should really be shifted fifteen feet this way. And maybe instead of, you know, running the force main along this alignment, maybe we should shift it ten feet this way to avoid the electric service coming to the house that we didn't know about or, or something else. And so having that flexibility allows us to do that, right? The other thing that we need to do is abandon septic systems. So we pump them. And then we collapse those systems. And so we need an easement to do that too. We have mapping information that tells us approximately where those facilities are on most properties. But we also need to be able to access those facilities. And not be stuck with accessing them through a ten foot strip or a fifteen foot strip or, you know, whatever it would be. So for example, I want to pump your septic tank. Well, you know, the sewer is coming along the side of the house and it goes to the grinder station. Maybe that's on the east side of your house, you know? And, and maybe the best way to get to your septic tank is to drive down the driveway. I don't have an easement to do that. Um, may, maybe the best way to get an excavator or a, a, another piece of equipment or have the construction workers access it, um, isn't necessarily along that alignment. And so all I'm trying to say is there's lots of variables. And the access agreement in terms of the blanket easement does allow us to access the property without specifically saying what we're going to do. However, once that facility is in the ground, the easement only allows us to operate and maintain that facility. So, you know, a, and do so in, in, in a way that is very limited. It's just a sewer access, sewer access and maintenance agreement. So we have the right to go on the property to do that and that's it.
Right.
You know, I can't go and, you know, there's been some, some, some wild claims made. People thought that we were going to put a water tower in their backyard. One guy did, um, you know?
So here's, here's one question. So one person that called me, they said, what happens if I, if I want to add a stall to my garage? The pipe is coming, they said, well, the map is, is coming right next to my garage.
Right.
So what happens if I, if I want to add a stall? Then I'm not able to add a stall because that's underground.
Well, that's, that's, that's a consideration, so.
But they should talk to you about it.
Right, we will be, we'll be meeting with those folks, so let's take that issue into account. So that one might be a reason that I didn't know you wanted to move or add a, add a garage stall. So I go and meet with that property owner and they say, you know, yeah, I might want to extend this building out fifteen feet sometime in the future. Can we lift station or that grinder station and the associated force main, uh, to the west, ten, fifteen feet? I'd say, of course, we would do that. But if we had a prescribed easement, then we'd have to go through a process of rewriting that entire easement, which doesn't make sense. Um, so let's go with your same example. Let's say you didn't tell me you wanted to put that grinders or extend your garage out and you sell the house and somebody else buys it and they decide to do that. Well, there is that easement, what, what could be done about it? Well, the pipe would have to be moved.
But they, and they still have that.
And they still have that right. They'd come into the city and say, you know, I got to move that pipe. And we would say, that's fine, you're going to move it. This is how you're going to have to reconstruct it and you're going to have to pay for that cost. Now that might cost them a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
But they have the right to move it, so long as they coordinate that with the city. And of course, there's some things that would need to be done. The curb stop, the valve would have to be turned off or they, you know, there'd be sewage shooting out of the pipe that they cut. Uh, so you know, there's a prescribed process to do that, but the agreement is written as such as, you know, we have that flexibility. And if you look at the frequently asked questions document, that item's specifically discussed in that.
Right, and, and, and one, one of my questions to one of the people was, did you read your letter? Did you respond to your letter? Well, I, I didn't respond to my letter because they want a blanket easement and, and I don't want to give them a blanket easement, so.
And oftentimes they haven't also come to the meetings.
And, and they, I know they have come.
Okay.
But. Some have, yeah. And, and it's amazing how many people have not read any of the correspondence.
And I have had conversations with people too that they said, I just don't have time. And I'm like, oh, I think a lot of your questions will be answered. It's, it's not easy reading, it's difficult to interpret. That's, that's why it's important to ask, yeah, and that's why it's important to ask questions. And I, I think you have been really gracious with your time and also what's her, what's her name that is?
Linda.
Linda is really good, you know, so.
And that, that is a concern. I mean, there's just a lot of data. We tried to condense it as much as we could, but there's, it's complicated.
And, and, and I, I did explain, because one of the things I heard was there's, there's too much in these documents. I'm not, I don't have time to sit and read and, and it's, it's difficult to decipher what it is. Talked about the whole bulleted points and this is why that's happening and, uh, but I, I'm glad to hear they, they can actually move it because they were, they were, I don't want to say, well, they were under the understanding, whether they got it trumped up from wherever, they were under the understanding that once it's there, it's there, it can't be moved. Um, so I mean, that, that's good to know and I, I'll take that back to that person. So.
Yeah, I think the bottom line is we're all reasonable folks and cities, city wants to be reasonable and fair with the property owners and, 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 and that's the methodology that we're all trying to work within and, and, you know, do, do what's really best for everybody in the long, long term. And we try to have public open houses and, you know, my number's on there.
I know, there's always.
Linda's numbers on there, all they got to do is call if they have questions. And we have had a lot of questions, but not everybody.
Yeah, and then there are some out there that, that won't come, that will have questions and whether they don't do good in those type of forums.
So to that end, and we're, we're continuing to work with folks. Uh, Linda's going to continue to call and she's going to set up some one-on-one appointments. And, and right now we're, we've, we've got about seventy-five percent back. You know, there's that, a handful of folks that I just say no. You know, don't want to talk about it, just, just say no and, you know. It is what it is, but.
Just like the letter we put together, the little bullet points, here's.
Right.
Here's the repercussions from not signing and that's about as simple as you can get.
Right, and, and I'm glad that that was put together because, and, and that's what I've explained, okay? You can choose not to do it, but you want to pay a hundred percent of the cost.
Yeah, just make sure you understand.
The negative ramifications are significant.
Yeah.
And they will get billed easement.
Yeah.
No, and any late fees whenever it's operational, so.
So we're, we're keep, we're, we talked about that at, at length at the sewer and water committee, but we will keep reaching out to those folks and, and, and trying to provide the information and, and hopefully they come around and sign. Um, but does it impact the project? Doesn't. I mean, potentially it will lower the cost for the city if those grinder stations don't go in. But that's it, they're, they're you know, it, it, it doesn't impact the project from a financial standpoint or funding standpoint whatsoever. In, in a negative way. So, um, since we're talking about easements, let's move to the permanent and temporary easement item. Um, we have acquired all of the permanent and temporary easements with the exception of there's one with Riverbend Associates, Riverbend Estates Homeowners Association, that's associated with, uh, Riverbank Stabilization Agreement that we, we've sent them and we'll be meeting with them shortly on. Um, the other one is with Ornoco Estates. Um, and the reason that's not been executed is it's part of what will be a larger agreement, wastewater agreement with Ornoco Estates for service. And obviously the access easement enters into that. So all of those easements have been acquired. And we had a fair amount of correspondence with PFA. Um, long story short, we decided not to record those easements immediately and make payment, um, immediately. For some kind of logistic considerations about how the easements get recorded and they need to be recorded with, um, certain loan and, um, grant document numbers. And so to avoid having to record them multiple times and when PFA can reverse, reimburse a city um, for the various types of easements, we kind of decided that it's best to wait until sometime in October to record those and, and submit payments. So what we've done is crafted a letter to property owners, um, kind of explaining that situation. I, I do have a draft of the letter. Like I have kind of had some correspondence and that'll probably go out later this week. Um, just explaining to property owners that, that circumstance. So that's the update on that. Um, the income survey for Ornoco Estates isn't going very well. We have a very low response rate at this point, and that's very unfortunate from the standpoint of, um, the income survey essentially provides Ornoco Estates with a great opportunity for grant funds that would essentially reduce their costs by potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars if people would fill out the survey. that would essentially reduce their costs by potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars if people would fill out the survey. And, uh, so to that end, I have reached out to Ornoco Estates again, twice since we met. Pretty much nothing's happening, uh, which I'm frustrated by. They've gotten the message very clearly that this is a big deal and time is of the essence and they need to get moving on the, or, uh, on the income survey. Essentially, it's private property, we don't really feel like we can go in there and do something. They need to help get the word out, help reach their residents and help convey the appropriate messages that it's important. You know, and there's really no negative there's no downside to the residents. There's no downside to anybody to do this, it's important for everybody to do it. And so, um, it's just a no-brainer that it has to be done and we, we need to continue to encourage them to do that. So I would continue to do that.
Call sometime this week, yeah.
I emailed on that again today. But you haven't met with them either.
I mean.
You, they didn't ever call you either.
Chris Keeson from Cedar responded, said he's available tomorrow morning.
So that's kind of been a sore spot, we're pushing, we'll continue to push on that. And I also mentioned the Riverbend Estates and the Cedar Woodlands HOA. There's essentially two agreements associated with the Riverbank stabilization improvements that need to be executed. They've been drafted, information's been sent out to Riverbend and Mike's reviewing the Cedar Woodlands stuff and we'll get that out shortly. And so we'll meet with those folks and we've had some conversations with those, uh, groups in the past. And I think the situation's improved even over what we previously talked about, so I'd expect that to go forward.
And they're sending the income statements to you guys, right?
No, no. A third party.
Okay.
Cedar, actually, is doing the income survey, so there's an independent third party that has no dog in the fight, so to speak, no, they, they don't care. And they're experienced dealing with it, so they've been a good partner for that. And I, you know, that's why Ryland was talking to Chris Keeson here this, this week again, trying, we're all pushing. Cedar's pushing, we're pushing. We're frustrated.
I mean, being they're, they're a private entity, it's really Ornoco Estates, not their people. It's Ornoco Estates that's gonna take the big hit, if they don't get it, right?
Yeah, theoretically, they, they pass the cost on to the. And so if we can, if we can get the income survey and get the grant dollars, that essentially buy down the cost for the benefiting users. And so that's, that's the impetus for the push. Ultimately, it's, it's, it's good for the resident there. Really good for the project, good for everything, so that's why we, that's why it needs to get done. Um, that's my kinda short update.
Just one quick comment, going back to the, uh, contracts. The twenty-fifth of August for the one and two, two and three and one on second of September. Uh, should we consider a special meeting just to discuss those separate from the September twenty-second monthly council meeting?
Um, I don't know.
Detail we need to.
Yeah, I don't know that it matters until you know what the bottom line number is. I mean, it just, you, you have to have all the pieces of the puzzle in play to to make that decision, um.
It is such a big.
Yeah, and, and the bids are complicated, you know.
More time to discuss it or is it pretty much a cut and dried, here's the low bid and?
I think it depends on where the bids come in. I mean, if the bids are good, um, that makes the decision a lot easier and then, you know.
So let's just leave that open, see with how the bids come back.
But just so also, so everybody knows, all three bids, um, there's essentially, you know, unit price bids for all of these components and there's a total base bid, so that's kind of the bottom line. And then that is based on like construction manual and all of the equipment and manufacturers that have been approved or pre-approved in some cases. Um, and so the contract does allow people, contractors to submit alternate, not alternate, substitute bid items for, you know, if, if, if we specified, you know, a certain type of valve or a certain type of window or a certain type of whatever. And we said, you know, these are the three manufacturers and three products that are, that, that are acceptable. And somebody else says, well, you know, I have the same valve, um, meets all your specifications, but it's not listed here. Well, you can submit that valve as a substitute item and say, you know, as it's this valve and it's manufactured by this person and that reduced cost or the reduced prices, you know, a thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars or whatever. So then we can the city can choose to award the contract based on the base bid and any combination of the substitute items. But you don't have to take any of them if you don't want, you can just go base bid or pick and choose substitute items. And so we'll work through that and we'll make some recommendations as to truly are they substitute items, is this really in your best interest? And kinda talk through that. So that's coming. Be fascinating.
All right, um, like that's all those items that.
I do, and may, maybe if we didn't get the minutes in the packet, just send them, send them out. There's good in, there's good minutes there, yeah.
We will when we get up, we haven't got them.
I sent them to.
We just got Parks and Trails five minutes ago during the council meeting, we don't get the minutes.
And the agenda.
I'm not gonna chase people.
All right. All right, next item is, um, under new business. This is a, I didn't, uh, the Dana asked about city newspaper options. What was your? Thoughts there, Dan?
Yeah, I would just like to open up discussion and have the staff do a little research into, um, cost comparisons, viewer, reader, subscriber comparison, what we get for the dollars we spend. I think as we grow, we're going to want to broaden our options for readers, broaden our subscriber base. I think we also reside in Olmsted County, the paper is not based in our county. And frankly, we've had some issues recently, so I'd like to see us consider, consider different options, which would be possible to.
So we have, um, of course, Zomroda's our annual paper, and we decide in January and we can at that point in time too, we can review possibilities of that. Carolyn did check with the, um, post bulletin. And what you share with you, what you heard from them.
Yep, I emailed them, I talked to two different people and to be honest, they didn't give us, like us, you know, they didn't give us like a solid quote because they said, it's different all the time and it depends on what you put in. What I can say is when we posted Kane's job, um, I believe we ran it Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday, two e-papers and an actual live paper. And it was eight hundred and fifty dollars. Um, so they did state and they admitted and stated they were, you know, much higher because it's a bigger city and, you know, they do e-papers and they do live papers certain days a week. Um, and, but it would just depend, you know, like a, a public, you know, a legal notice, things like that are bigger. Uh, we do an annual water thing for Public Works, which is really large and, um, so it would just depend, you know, they go by the words. And if you put little pretty lines around them and, you know, so you, they, they don't just give you like a staple quote, you know what I mean?
Seems like they would have.
No.
Identify the item.
I guess if, did, were you, were you clear that we were looking, you know, hey, we might wanna give you business?
I said we were shopping around other newspapers, yeah.
So that's kind of why I wonder too, like I would, I'm curi, more curious too about like just who you, how far do you reach? Who do you, how many people do you reach, how do you reach them? What's the, you know what I mean, just kinda demographic.
It definitely reaches out far, you know.
Right.
That's a big county.
Right, because that's what I mean and, and for our, again, I think what we're looking for is quality. Quality and we're looking for more, you know, that's why that's why we have to put it in the post bulletin when we have job postings, because we know we have to do that to reach who we're trying to reach. You know, to reach enough people. We know that the, our annual.
We need that exposure and that's why. We put it on several sites, so.
So I'm just, I just would like us to be.
So would be okay to just to kinda do a more in-depth request for quotes in January when we go out and?
Um, well, we would start getting quotes now, cause it takes quite a while.
And as far as I, I know, there is no time, from what I understand, that you can change newspaper at any time. When I, League of Minnesota cities, like, doesn't, you don't.
So we still have to do that anyway, whether we do it now or next January.
So can, can you, instead of just saying we're shopping around, can you ask for us, for a sales rep to contact you?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
There'll, there'll be a specific sales rep that will contact you and they will come up with.
Okay, a package, yep.
Okay, I think when we do it, to be fair, we need an apples-to-apples comparison across all.
Put minimum, what was for an apples-to-apples comparison, we need to be very specific about what we're looking for.
Absolutely. I agree. And ask them, ask them to give special deals to cities, other cities that they publish for, or do other cities have a package?
That's a good idea.
Because like those publishing, you know, publishing those.
Legal notices.
Well, and, and the, our, the job postings, that, there might be a discount that or, you know what I mean, it might be in a package, so it might be cheaper. Right, you know, that, so we shouldn't take that eight hundred and fifty and just go with it, you know, we have to, yeah.
The Minnesota, League of Minnesota cities have sample requests for information we could model on them, is that a resource that they would offer? I am not familiar.
There's a lot of information out there on League of Minnesota cities, but.
I think there's, you know, we, we can request a quote and everything. I do think though, those are so, you know, just a comment would be from a relationship standpoint, is that if we work with a Zomroda paper, it's local, we've always had a reporter. If you look at post bulletin, there's no guarantee, we'd have to request to make sure somebody's here. And so that's, either they're willing to do that or they're not willing to do that, so we're gonna lose coverage if we don't have a representation too.
Right, but you know, some of the, the coverage has been, has been damaging, not only to, uh, people, people's reputations on the council, but to potentially the sewer project. So I would say that, again.
How so has it been? I, I know, I know that there was two words, Ryland and I thought, but there were two words off in that one article, but beyond that.
Well, there were people passing around information about me in town, Jim.
About what?
About me in town. I was contacted by a concerned resident, she was concerned for me.
But if it was one resident.
No, 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 she, she, she contacted me saying that there was paper, there was something going around town. And then, um.
But I, I get it, okay.
And then the sewer, and then somebody on the sewer committee was, they were concerned, they were like, there's something like this could, you know, potentially harm the project that's been like, you know, and I said, I didn't, yeah, that's very true. So, yeah.
But I.
I'm happy.
I think we have to be careful not just to jump on one situation or.
Well, and then if you go back, there's been multiple people in the past that have had similar experiences, ex-council members, so, um, they would probably be happy to talk with you about it.
I, I mean, I, I've heard good things, I mean, I think you're gonna get good and bad with any of them, but.
So let's, uh, yeah, that's, if you want, if you want city staff to pursue, um, those kinds of details, then we should ask city staff or?
Yeah, I, I mean, I personally, I didn't, you know, I mean, I'm so, yeah, I'm very, I'm very curious and I, again, I wanna know, um, you know, as we grow and as we, we look for potential more staff and I think it's gonna be in our best interest anyway. And I, and I know you say like Zomroda's local, but I think we're closer to Rochester, so I feel like.
You know, we could.
So when we say local.
Yeah, there's a lot of angles to it and I think we need to start deep looking at those and we can have city staff, if you wanna, if you wanna make a motion to, to whatever you would like to have them do, we can start that investigation.
That a motion, do you need a motion to do that? To get quotes, we do, no.
So I don't know, I don't.
No, I think you can just direct city staff to.
Once I get the information.
I'd like to see it come back to the council.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
You know, or a city of our size.
Did this get missed?
Oh, yeah, what is this?
That was something we're discussing September. It's not on our agenda, so we really can't, shouldn't discuss it. Read it, take a look at it and, uh, we'll talk about it in September. Should we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Question to adjourn.
All those in favor, say, probably saying aye. Dana wants to motion adjourn. All right, accepted. All the favors, say, probably saying aye.
Wait, do you need? Motion to adjourn. Thank you, a second, all right, okay.
Time we're just, it's better maybe you and Ryland and myself discuss what is gonna be my involvement with this, I mean, I'm, I'm so hands off right now.